All right, welcome to the school committee meeting of February 27th, 2024. If we can update you guys for the public.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris, do you want to read the mission and vision?
Sure. The Dammont Public Schools' mission: The Dammont Public Schools creates local class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resiliency. And Dammont Public School's vision: Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them.
Thank you, Chris. In accordance with the Massachusetts Open Law, I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. If any member of the public would like to make an audio or video recording of this meeting, please notify me by raising your hand either in person or remote. Please state your name and the purpose for recording. Additionally, all participants are reminded to mute their microphones when not speaking to minimize background noise and ensure clear recording. Where does she go?
I feel you guys fell for that phrase.
Thank you, Gilda. Is there anyone else making a recording? And let me just double check here. Seeing none. Okay. Before we turn it over to lovely Ms. Bennett for Student Advisory, I just want to make a little statement. I want to mention that, as you know, we had a workshop meeting regarding school safety planned for the evening of Tuesday, February 13th, 2024, which was canceled due to the snowstorm. The school committee is considering rescheduling the workshop meeting for some time on a future agenda. All right, now I'd like to turn it over to Sam Bennett.
Thank you. I want to just start with sports today. It's the end of the winter season, so they're into tournament play, have three teams. The boys hockey team will play at Galloway Serena on Thursday. The girls will play at home on Wednesday at 5:15. And girls basketball will be playing away at Springfield on Friday. The next thing I want to talk about is senior auctions. So we do this every year, and the senior classes, accepting in need of donations from businesses and families in the community. Basically, the money raised goes towards graduation. It's one of the biggest fundraisers that we do throughout our time at the high school, and it'll be taking place on March 16th at the theme fair. And then also the virtual component will be the following week, and that's sort of like the more big-ticket items will be. But we're definitely still accepting donations, and that's coming up. That being said, the theme fair will be Saturday, March 16th, in the Falmouth High School gymnasium and fieldhouse. Also, we have AP art galleries going up in the next coming months, which is really exciting. Falmouth High School Theater Boosters are hosting trivia night on March 8th at 6:00 PM at Falmouth High School. And the Spring Musical is just going to be Grease, and they're working on that now. And lastly, AP classes this year have started to take trips, field trips to Lawrence to help out eighth graders. So I first did that in my English class. We had a really great time with the kids. We worked with, like, helping them write their essays. And now I'm going again with my bio class tomorrow to help them work on their science fair projects and just kind of like talk to them about the high school and talk to them about, like, what are AP classes and what are your choices and things like that. So that's really fun, and I wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? How do, how do folks donate to the auction?
So that's getting in touch with the Activities Office is the best bet. We just got a new Activities Officer, her name is Ms. Lavoy, I believe is how you pronounce it. So that would be C. Leroy at Falmouth K-12. I made that up. Anyone else?
Awesome. Great. Thank you for a great update. Public comment: Members of the public are allowed to speak out about items that are not on the agenda. Comments should be limited to two minutes in length. Due to open meeting law, the committee cannot act on public comment. For items on the agenda, the chair may accept comments from the public following the committee's decision of an item. Additional comments and feedback can also be submitted by email to schoolcommittee@falmouth.k12.us. Is there anyone here for public comment?
Yes.
Great, please come sit, have a seat, and let us know who you are.
Hi, I'm Jen McCarthy. I have three daughters at T-Ticket Elementary School. Do I just start?
Yeah.
Oh my gosh, am I wasting time? I'm here to speak about the parent-grading advisory committee and the introduction of mastery-based learning. I have asked for basic information, like, how will the proposed change benefit students? Where else has this been done? And what role will teachers, parents, and school committee actually play in this process? But these questions have still not been answered after two of the four planned meetings. It seems that all the decisions have already been made and that the committee was formed only to give the appearance that teachers and parents are involved, without truly involving them. There has been little effort by the administration to share information with parents, which is why I'm sure there was only three parents at last night's meeting. The notification was buried in an email. There was no call to all parents, no meeting reminder sent, no agenda provided for the second meeting. Teachers who will carry the burden of implementing these changes were actually discouraged from joining it, being told that only one per school was allowed at the meeting. I'll say that again. One, our teachers, who are subject matter experts about teaching our children, were told that only one per school was allowed to join the committee that supposedly formed to evaluate teaching changes in our schools. It is not a new thing to form a committee solely for appearances, but it is the wrong way to go about it, introducing change that will affect our children and our schools. It is the wrong way to be truly partners in learning.
Thank you, Ms. McCarthy. Anyone else for public comment? Okay. Alyssa, please.
Hi, Alyssa. Hi, Paris. I've sent a couple of emails with questions regarding the assault that took place at high school since February 18th. And I'm really disappointed that I'm still waiting on answers to these questions. It's very frustrating. I don't understand why. It seems like the committee doesn't want answers to these questions, because I would think that you guys would be looking for the same information that I've been asking for. And related to your statement, Alyssa, I find it alarming that the committee is only considering rescheduling the workshop that was supposed to discuss some of these issues, presumably in general sense of safety. And I hope that you do reschedule that meeting. And when you do, I would ask that you would communicate it better, because there was, again, there was no emails sent out to parents, no notification about the workshop. I think it was just mentioned at the previous school committee meeting. I guess that's all. But I just, again, I'm unsure that people will take these issues seriously, and I think the concerns are really important.
Thanks. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none. I've decided that we're going to take things a little bit out of order on our agenda to be respectful of some of our guests here this evening. So instead of having the presentation of books in the library, excuse me, instead of having the presentation of advanced course enrollment, we are going to have discussion with our legislators. And I'd like to introduce Representative Dylan Fernandez and Representative David Vera. Other dorms.
I heard my name.
Welcome. Welcome to the hall. So, welcome to the school committee meeting. If you've not met myself or the committee, I'm Melissa Keefe, I'm the chair this year. Chris Lumping, Margaret Souza, Kelly Welch, Susan Augusta, Kelly Goldstone, Tara Maderas, Bill Dorfner, and we have Mike Halen via Zoom. You can turn around if you want. So.
Susan and I served on this committee. I used to sit here. Although I used to sit for the whole meeting and participate in the debates and the arguments.
1993.
Two.
True, true. And you graduated in 93, right? So, welcome, both of you. And who would like to begin with just what, what is your role? What is your connection between the committee and, say, DESI?
Sure.
Sure. Heard of them.
Sure, so the connection between committee and DESI is you and DESI. Our role as legislators is to set up budgets, to set up state statutory regulations that deal with how DESI deals with the school committees, whether they're regional school committees or municipal school committees like yours. We had a meeting that the superintendent was at, well, Cape superintendent's not too long ago. We brought up a bunch of different issues that were happening in the state. And so a lot of folks were saying, well, we need to go to the legislature for this and that and that. And in one of our breakout groups, I was saying, well, how many of you have reached out to DESI about this particular issue? That this is something that appears that can be done by regulation and not by state statutory law. And so we had a whole conversation about that, because we actually had some school committee members, not from Falmouth, but some school committee members that had never heard of DESI. It's like, well, that's the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. You have no idea who they are, so I guess we need more like orientation with some new school committee members around the state to make sure that you understand how that works. So, you know, there's three boards, right? There's the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, which is most connected to the majority of the work you do. But then there's also Early Education and Care. Now, Early Education and Care deals with your pre-K programs, which you already have, but it also deals with after-school programs. We've got the partnership of YMC. We've got programs which are then regulated by EEC, not by DESI. And then there's higher ed. And so higher ed is relationships that you might be creating with Cape Cod Community College and those types of relationships where you're trying to step off your high school students and get them prepared. So what I see, and you can talk about how you see this, well, but what I see, my role, is being able to work on providing resources, which is through the General Appropriations Act. And we're dealing with that in April. The hearings are happening, if you haven't heard already. We're midway through the Ways and Means hearings on the current House Two budget. And then from there is to be able to hear when there's concerns, and that's why we meet with the superintendents and the school committee representatives annually, usually down at the Cape Cod Collaborative, to figure out what new items and what new agenda issues you all have that might be subject to a statutory intervention, which is us, or it might be subject to a regulatory intervention, which is DESI. And then we try to set up that relationship.
I mean, I view our role as very similar to David's, but essentially it is, as legislators, our job is to write, pass, and craft and vote on laws and also be the go-between constituents, school committees, any local entity, and the state and help kind of bridge those barriers that might exist and get you questions on answers that you might need from the state that can be a challenge to get on your own. So we do a lot of that. And, you know, I think from, in the past few years, I think there's a lot to be proud of on the legislative side on what we've been able to do, you know, passing the Student Opportunity Act a couple of years ago, which is the biggest infusion of funding in our public school system since the 90s. And that's paid for by, in large part, or not in large, in part, by the millionaires tax that was passed through the legislature and then voted on by the voters, saying that that funding has to go both to schools and to infrastructure. And in the past couple of budgets since passing the Student Opportunity Act, we've made sure that that's fully funded in the budget. And, you know, I know there's been some increases in Chapter 70 here, which have been pretty significant. I think like a 33%, 30-ish percent increase, maybe since last year. I know that that can be really helpful. And then really proud that we passed Universal School Meals this year for students as well. You know, I don't think any kid who's trying to learn can't learn on an empty stomach. It's really, really hard. It's important that kids, you know, like, you know, schools are dealing with so much stuff, right? They're not just dealing with teaching children, but they're dealing with all the things that those kids bring with them to school. And so being kind of food insecure and having that taken off the table is one of the many things in a kid's mind, so they can just focus on learning, I think is really important. So that's another big piece. I see coming up in this session us taking on issues around early education and care. That's been on the docket for a while now. We saw during, I mean, it's been an issue for a very long time in the state, how honestly little we value early education and care from a dollar perspective and how much we spend. That's been a real problem for many, many years. But I think during the pandemic, when everyone became, all parents became a childcare facility, it really exposed the need for it. So I see us doing something on that this session. We did a lot actually last session in terms of additional funding. We funded it to the highest rates it's ever been funded at. But I see us looking at doing something a little more sustainable in terms of programming. There's proposals on the table right now, or if you make a, you know, you hit a certain income threshold, you get significant funding back. And there's, and along with funding directly to facilities that help with early education and care, you know, we're also in a challenging fiscal situation at the moment, as, you know, David brought up, the budget. But I see us moving forward with something impactful on the early education and care end and the discretionary funding that we do have, which unfortunately isn't what it was just last year and the year before. I do see us using that, those funds for childcare and child education.
And Monday I was on what they call the 9:30 call. So Strategies for Children. You know, Larry organizes a 9:30 call every day of the week. We have early education care providers, whether they're home providers, they're center providers, or they're part of the public system. And Secretary, Commissioner Kirshol was on that. And we were talking about the pipelines now that are being developed because of the workforce issues, right? So we can have funding, we can have vouchers, we can have contracted slots. But if we don't have certified instructors, we're not going to be able to get young people into those slots. So we have the subsidy for the family, or we have the subsidy for the slot. We do have these, we call them Commonwealth Stabilization Grants now, which we're trying to get rid of. Hopefully we'll do that this year. We'll get rid of this notion that it's a grant, and it's a new way of doing business, right? The way of doing business is we don't, in public school system, we don't figure out how many kids showed up today and then get funding for how many kids came today. And then tomorrow you have a few students that are absent, so you don't get funding for them being absent tomorrow, right? That's how you were managing early education and care, with the Commonwealth Stabilization Grants, which started with the federal money, but then when the federal money started to draw back, we've invested part of that millionaires tax and some of the general appropriation funds to say, okay, here's the thing, how many slots do you have? And report back to us, how many kids are showing up? Is there chronic absenteeism? Because I know DESI's been talking about that as well. Is there chronic absenteeism, and if so, why? And how do you make sure that there is a child in the subsidized slot? But for those that are either running the home business or the center of care business, how do you make a decent business plan if you have no idea what your daily, weekly, quarterly, and annual revenue is going to be? By smoothing this business plan out, the revenue model, we're able to have some more stability into the planning of the business and then to make sure that those slots are full. So if a child leaves, then we need to backfill that slot ASAP from somebody that's on a waitlist. And so now our waitlist, I don't know if you've heard, the waitlist, actually, not the waitlist, excuse me, the slots are at the 58,000 as of last week, which is pre-pandemic level. It took us a while to rebuild and get those infrastructures rebuilt after COVID, because folks lost their professions, centers closed, some didn't come. So we're at, we're at the 58,000. And now we have some additional monies to be distributed for subsidies. And the department now is looking at how do we best plan for those funds going forward? When I first began legislating 13 years ago, this was the first thing, Sean Don's house when the kid cut ties, called the state house like first or second week and asked if I was there. I actually answered the phone. He's like, oh, you answered the phone. I was like, oh, my aunt was in the bathroom. I don't really answer the phone. But it was exciting, you know, he said, oh, he's tied up. And we said, well, what's important? One of the first things I said was early education. He said, well, I don't hear much about that. Talk about it. So we talked about it. Well, that was when a handful of folks in the House and the Senate were talking about early education and care. Now you've got the governor, you've got the Senate president, and you've got the Speaker in the House, all talking about early education and care as an issue of priority. And now you're seeing funds and investments going into those arenas. During that time, I was also on the Education Committee. That's when I used to come in more frequently, because I had the latest and the greatest every hearing. When I was on the Education Committee, we found out that the governor wanted to, the governor at the time wanted to increase some taxes because he needed money to go to the waitlist for early education care. And we found that the Commonwealth returned $10 million of that line item at the end of the fiscal year. So you need more money because you have kids on a waitlist, but you gave us back $10 million to put those children into childcare. Long story short, we got rid of the commissioner, we got a new commissioner, we had a special commission on early education care, which I served on, and we rebuilt the structure and the model. And now we're on our second commissioner, Commissioner Kirshol, who I think is doing as good a job, if not better, because of the pandemic arena than Tom did. Tom Weber, that many of you may have known. And Tom is now involved in the Coalition. He's involved every morning when he's available for the 9:30 call, and he's working with business communities and reaching them up. And I know that we've had some conversations, the superintendent and I had some of these meetings, about where can Falmouth, as a public system, really prepare students for kindergarten and first grade? How can we look at this community and find out? How do we provide universal pre-K 1 and pre-K 2 access? By still using the mixed delivery system, though. I'm not saying we're going to create a whole public school model, but there's some gaps to be filled that potentially could be filled with public school employees. There's folks like my mom, who used to run a home daycare over here at T-Ticket down at the, what used to be Joe's Drive-In Ranch, right? Come home at the end of the day, eight-track cassette tapes, we all ripped apart by some kid that was in there. And we'd be like, wow, Mom, why do you have these kids in the house? How about allowing those home childcare providers to have space in a public building? And then all of them together can purchase economies of scale. I've been there, you've been with the Collaborative for years. The Collaborative finds economies of scale by purchasing. So if we had all the early education care providers in Falmouth that needed to buy the same stuff, then they could buy that stuff in bulk and reduce the rates and the costs. And then we are investing for our kindergarten teachers and our first-grade teachers by making sure that those young people are better prepared to learn when they walk through the official public school door. And I know when I sat here the night, well, actually, we were across the valley, but I sat there the night that Dr. Intenucci, Lincoln Demora, decided that Falmouth was too big. You were at that meeting. Falmouth was too big to be able to take Mashpee, and they had a five-year window to build a high school. And we built this district for 7,000 students. And we renovated every building in this district for 7,000. What's your census right now? 2,997?
Yeah, 2,900 and change.
Yeah, so just made a couple, a couple of decimal points off there, right? But this district was built for 7,000 students. And so I think this is the opportune time, particularly when these resources are becoming available, both in capital and operations for early education and care, to really have a deep public dialogue about how many kids out there are not in an early education and care setting? How many kids are on waitlists here in Falmouth? And how can we pull together infrastructure and leverage the infrastructure that we have in our public district with the private entities to make sure that no child is left behind?
Thanks.
Passion behind us, really, but I want us to go.
Does anyone have any questions for the representatives or comments? Anything? Oh, please.
I've got a question, not related to early education. And to give you some background, I myself am a former SRO and supervise a team of SROs in another district. So my number one concern for our kids, especially in today's day and age, is their safety when they go to school, regardless of whether they're pre-K or seniors. About a year or so ago, Massachusetts changed their laws in how schools could discipline students, specifically suspension of students. And in that, my understanding is that you could suspend a student for assault and a teacher, but you could not automatically suspend a student for assault on another student without going through additional steps first or have to somehow justify why. And so one question is, I'm unclear as to why a student's safety is different than a teacher's safety. But I'm wondering what the rationale was for taking away a school's ability to suspend a student for assaulting another student without having to go through some other additional measures, sometimes of which is actually asking the student who was victimized to sit across from the student who assaulted them and work their differences out. So I'm wondering if you could just kind of shed some light on that? Because I've got a lot of questions for parents about that particular thing. I personally think you got it completely wrong. And I'm wondering if you could just shed some light on what the rationale is for that?
I think the rationale was, well, a couple of things. I think the rationale to reduce suspensions was driven a lot by, I think it was mostly the Black and Latino Caucus that was pushing it, because there's a, if you looked into the, if you drilled into the race data around it in the state on the macro level, there is a huge inequity between the race of students being suspended. And so I know it was a priority of the Black and Latino Caucus to try to have some, just kind of guardrails around that. And that probably, I don't think we voted on the specific order of items that a school had to go through to suspend a student. I imagine we just gave a broad, we gave it to regulation.
We authorized them to do regulations around it.
And they proposed or went forward with regulations around it. So that's not, that wouldn't be statute. And if you need help sorting through those regulations, we'd be happy to kind of reach out and walk through some of those.
And I know Mary's dealt with this, with specific issues that.
And it's not accurate that a student can't be suspended if they assaulted others who are in the statute.
Exactly. So there's no difference in the level of assault. It's how you deal with documentation about whether or not there is some type of intervention, which you're talking about, you know, mediation or something, if that's appropriate, or the documentation, and we're going to get to the point of either a suspension or an expulsion.
My understanding is that documentation is required if it's an assault on a teacher.
It's a different statute that applies to assault on a staff member. But it doesn't mean that you can't suspend a student immediately if they assaulted another student without even trying alternative remedies. That is still a law.
Provided they go through the additional documentation.
All they have to document is that the student's continued presence poses a problem in the school. That's it.
And then the question is, is there long-term suspension? So that's the immediate assault happens, that is, if you get the immediate, it happened, it's a threat. Tomorrow morning, this child can't come back into the building. From there, the documentation has to be, when can the child come back into the building? Are they a continued threat? Are they a short-term threat? Are there other placements? You know, so they have to figure out what, because every child in Massachusetts under the Constitution has a right to an education. Supreme Court's already laid that out for us. And so because of that, how do we protect the right to the education and balance the safety of the environment, the school environment? And so one way we do that is to be able to have the immediate intervention of removing a clear and present danger, right? A clear threat and danger. And then to figure out how do we continue to integrate that child that's been removed from the system into a public education? Is it here? Is it somewhere else? That's, that's the tough stuff. Where do they go? Do they come back here? Do they come back to school? Do they go to someone else's classroom? Maybe what's the plan for reintegration of all of that? But as Reverend Fernandez said, the data was shocking when you look at the disproportion particularly long-term suspensions and expulsions when it came down to race.
And I will tell you, I completely agree that they should be consistent across, doesn't matter what the child looks like. I just want to make sure we're not having tools taken away to control the insides. I just want to make sure we're not having tools taken away to control the inside safety of our schools for the sake of being fair. It needs to, it needs to be done fairly, but we shouldn't have tools taken away from us. And I just want to.
The other thing we need to do, as someone with a CRO background, we need to get our CROs back in Falmouth, right? And so right now, we're preparing nine additional officers that are up at the academy. I don't know which academy, but I was invited to go see them. So we're trying to staff up, because we've got a major shortage here, which is why you don't have your SROs right now. You have the moving, rotating one, but you don't have them assigned to each school like we did at one point. So we need to beef up the ranks within our department so that we can have direct and immediate access. So you all have done, I think, the Yomen's job, are putting together a plan to bring in some civilian safety folks that can be at some eyes and ears and be there to be able to be the call, so to speak, right? To be the eyes and ears and then the call for the law enforcement intervention, intervention when it's necessary. But another thing that we worked on in 2016, when we did the GUN Act in 2016, was funding and putting grants out for the Safe and Supportive School Model. And to my knowledge, Falmouth still doesn't participate in Safe and Supportive Schools, which has grant plenty available, technical assistance available, to look at not only the safety of the infrastructure. And you do that through a self-assessment, which was piloted at Barnstable. But you also do that through looking at the social-emotional health and safety nets for the children. And so post-COVID, we're seeing, as you all are seeing, this increase in the mental health issues and the social-emotional well-being of children. And that was specifically put into the GUN Control Bill in 2016 because the group that was pushing Safe and Supportive Schools after the model was developed wasn't getting any traction talking about the safety of the schools and the emotional well-being of the students. It just, it wasn't loud enough noise at the State House for anybody to do it. So when Speaker DeLeo was driving the bus in the House on the GUN Act, he said, "We need to do something with schools." And we said, "Well, are you familiar with Safe and Supportive Schools? We've been trying to get this thing through for the last few years." And he's like, "No, what is it?" And so he was briefed on it, and it was in there, and now it's part of the state budget every year.
And those are similar to the concepts of chronic prevention through environmental design, which we use, right?
Yeah, so you do a self-assessment, right? But you also look at your programming that's available. So it's not only the environmental design of the infrastructure, but it's also the programming and figure out where are your gaps in programming, and then you develop the action plan to fill it, and then you can apply for those grants.
Could you send me that information that was sent to the schools back in 2016?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, that goes out over here from Bessie.
Thank you. We could send that. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll send it to the Chair and send it out to all members so they can all take a look at it and see how it's going.
Thank you, Mr. Dyer. I know Mike Hanlon had a question or a comment. His hand is up.
I do, but Bill did steal a lot of my thunder. I believe that what Bill was talking about was we had to adopt a section in our code JIC for student discipline. And in that section, it does say, you know, red lines, no long-term suspension. It does say that instead of a suspension, unless there's immediate bodily harm, there'll be peer mediation and that stuff. And I understand what Bill's talking about. As someone who was bullied, to sit across from someone else and have to relive it is very difficult. And that was something that did come down from the State House. And I do understand the idea of the, you know, preschool and all that stuff is great, and then we don't want to single out students who might be having some issues. But what about the other students who are fearful? Like, what about their learning experience? We've had parents coming now for a year and a half, you know, discussing, you know, being bullied or, you know, and then they feel like no one's listening to them, nothing's happening. And we've had to said, "Talk to the state legislators who passed this law." So is there anything that we can do where the schools are more safe from a legislation standpoint? And so, I mean, I know that in Brockton, they're calling them the National Guard. And we're not there yet, but what can we do? Well, the school committee voted on it. I know the governor's not, but the school committee voted on it. And my question is that with the SRO thing, that we don't have SROs in town, is there anything that you two would somehow get some other kind of securities with short staff down here? I don't know what we can do to ensure that our students, our teachers are safe and our parents feel at ease.
So does the school committees or the administration feel that there's an immediate physical threat to the buildings in town?
No, we've not had that discussion.
Like they feel in Brockton?
We've not had that discussion. I'm assuming we don't.
And so there are having some issues, some high-profile ones that you all dealt with recently. I've met with that family. The family does not want to see legislative changes at this point. They said when they were ready, they thought it was a specific legislative change, that there were many issues related to the situation that they're still working out. And I told them, "As soon as you're ready, we'll sit down again and talk about it." We talked about Bessie and education as well, the difference between the regulation and the law, and how we could figure out if a structural change needed to happen, where should it happen? Should it happen at the CMR level or should it happen at the MGL level? And the family said they would get back to me if they were ready to pursue looking at some statutory change. Nine-member school committee, largest in Southeastern Massachusetts. Quite frankly, I think a little too large for the size of towns. But you have nine members on your school committee, not one of you have ever called me and asked me to change the law relative to school safety. So 548 vote, really easy to remember, the original exchange in Falmouth, 548 vote. If you want to talk about statutory change, we can come in and talk about it here. You can call me. I've been doing it for 13 years, and not once has a school committee ever asked me for a statutory change around school safety in Falmouth, or Bourne, or Mashpee, or Upper Cape Tech, or Cape Cod Tech. So we're here if you want to talk about it. But it's like Julie Buffett, if the phone doesn't ring, it's just me, right?
I don't know that Julie Buffett's on. Another issue I think is worth raising is around housing, because I know it's incredibly, incredibly hard to attract and retain talent here. And so I just want to bring it up because that's something we're going to take on this session. And it's actually, it's moving, so, you know, I want to put in your mind, so if you wanted to weigh in on it. But the governor has a really large and comprehensive housing bill that already had a hearing. The House and the Senate are going to take that up sometime this session. And it's a really big bill with a lot of stuff in it. So, you know, some of the, it puts a lot of more funding towards housing and our housing programs generally. It allows for accessory dwelling units by right in a more uniform way so that, you know, Falmouth has it, an ADU bylaw now, and a bunch of other towns have their own ADU bylaws. This would make them a little more uniform, the thought being that, and places that have done that, like California, if everyone has a very similar code, these units can be built on scale. It can be done really, really cheaply. So in one year of California passing a similar law, I think it was 30,000 to 40,000 ADUs were installed, whereas I think Falmouth passes a law, I don't know, like five, three. It was tough, right? So it gets, and that gets into the, it takes away the onerous issues around it. And it makes them so much cheaper, too, which is the really, you know, we need cheaper housing. As a local option, transfer fee or mansion tax that a community, if it wants to, can use to help fund local workforce housing in the town. And I think really important for our area, that has a component in there called seasonal communities designation, which is basically the entire Cape and Islands, parts of the Berkshire areas that are seasonal. And we want to really use this, this kind of committee that's going to be created to push around different AMI levels on who actually can qualify for affordable. Because right now, as you guys know, there's a huge missing middle in terms of your teachers that, you know, don't make enough or make too much to qualify for Capital A affordable. But our housing market is so out of whack and so out of reach, there's no way they can afford just a regular home here. So I actually see that as a really important vehicle going forward that's specific to our region. And it's just getting really, really challenging for anyone to try and own a home here and live here and work in the community. So, you know, this is moving. If you got, if there are specific, you know, components around it that you want to see included or added or thoughts on it, you know, now is actually a good time to weigh in, because I see us passing this this session, yeah.
I'm wondering if there's anything in that accessory dwelling component that the original home piece be owner-occupied or that the dwelling, the accessory, be not a short-term rental? Because it's not that, ownership is great, but rental is a problem here.
Yeah, no, that's, that's like the question to be asking, and the answer is it's not. But we're definitely going to make sure that, like, we're going to push to get that in there. This cannot just turn into Airbnb. And so you see this on, like, Nantucket, for instance. They, you know, they, like, Nantucket's the bellwether for the Vineyard, which is the bellwether for Falmouth and the rest of the Cape, right? And so Nantucket has been facing a housing crisis for 40-plus years now. And so what they did is that not only did they do accessory dwelling units decades ago, they did tertiary dwelling units. They did all those things to create more housing, but they didn't put any restrictions on it. And so now it is literally the most expensive place in the planet where you can go and stay for a room at night in the summertime. So you need those restrictions in place, and it's actually smart what Falmouth did. And if it doesn't come out the way we want it, I'm going to file amendment and do what Falmouth did, which is the six-month minimum.
I mean, because we have a lot of housing. It's just out of reach. Or it's empty.
Or it's empty.
Yeah.
It's empty, belonging to each other. The group that I helped find in 2015 that works with homeless folks. In the winter, we have two houses that are empty all winter. And we just have an agreement, we have a rental agreement, a man's house and a woman's house, we do transitional housing. Three out of four individuals that come into our housing in the winter get long-term housing placement before they leave, and then we follow them for two years. But these are just two houses that sit vacant all year, and we're taking up to 75, 80 individuals who are homeless, living in the town of Falmouth, and putting them through transitional program in a house that otherwise just sits empty. And there are a lot of them that are. Because there aren't a lot of folks that want to go on Airbnb and come to Falmouth in February. They do in June, July, August, September, where there's not as much traffic, October, you know, all that. But for the rest of that time, those things are sitting there. And the folks are like, "Well, you know, I don't want to rent it out because I want to make sure it's available for when the Airbnb ding does come up, that somebody wants that room or that house," right? So we do have to have those restrictions if we're going to do this as a statewide policy. Falmouth, I think, got it right, I think it was the third, I think it was the third time that we got it right.
Yeah, and we have one of the tightest rental markets in the country on Cape Cod. Like, the amount of units that are actually available for rent, the percentage is incredibly, incredibly low. And the turnover rate is just dismal. So it's a real struggle. It's gone to the point where it's completely unsustainable the way we're doing it. It was already bad, and then the pandemic exacerbated things. Now half the people who work on the Cape come over the bridges. And so, you know, we need to, there's no silver bullet on this, which is why I like the governor's bill, because it has a bunch of different components in it. You know, we need to really get serious about this. One thing we did on this was change the zoning requirements. This has already become a law. So it's a 50% simple majority at town meeting to be able to change zoning. And so now you have parts of Falmouth starting to be rezoned to create more housing in the downtown areas that meet the local aesthetic, that's walkable, near transportation and the like. So that was an early step we took, but there's clearly a lot more that we need to do.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Just have a comment in regards to Dylan. You're 100% correct in regards to that middle income. Then our staff is affected by this in regards to housing. And as our veteran teachers, for example, are retiring, it's going to be more difficult, very, very difficult for us to start to replace people. If those AMIs are adjusted, not only that, but other added incentives for professionals to come here, whether it be get that middle level that can't afford the daycare or they're struggling to pay the daycare so they can go be a teacher in our school or et cetera. Any other incentives that come along that, because of our situation here on Cape Cod, we really appreciate your attention?
I think a real good opportunity, too, is the program we have at Falmouth High School, right? Where the student leaves with an EDC certificate, not to run the center, but to work in the field, right? For the most part, if those young men and women decide that they're not going to go to college, that they're really interested in that field, for the most part, they're still in at home, right, because they're high school. And so they're bridging that year, two years after high school, living in the community with their parents. And they can come into a field which they're licensed to work the day they graduate from Falmouth High School. Oh, and by the way, what a pipeline for your first-grade teacher, your second-grade teacher. So during that period of time, incentive is getting one of these career pathways that we're developing. Go down to the community college and get your two years under your belt. And then we look at another state institution to get the other two years. And now you're a certified K-12 teacher who knows the culture of the community, knows the families, knows the system, because they've come through the system that gave them their certificate so they could start in the early education and care arena, which, again, we're doing rate reserve, working on that, because the pay there is dismal, and that's why a lot of them are leaving the field, one-third turnover every year in that field. The biggest part of that turnover is to go and become a public school teacher K-12 because of the benefits. But this is an opportunity to create that vision and a pipeline for students. Because I think students, they do it because they're interested, and then they're trying to figure out what to do next. And mom and dad says, you know, "You've got some options and everything." That's fine. And I'm not saying put kids into a silo, I'm not saying, "Well, if you come to this program, you have to do this." But really show them what this could do. This could mean that for the next two years, you can work over here with the students. And then you go to college at night, and we're going to help pay for the college at night at the Commonwealth. Oh, and then you can get this job that pays this amount, you'll have your license, and you can pick K-12 class. When I talk to students about the NAP program and other programs up in Bourne, they've got a lot of programs as well, that are looking at pipelines into health careers and stuff. When I talk to a lot of those students, they don't really see the pipeline. It's almost like it's myopic, right? They only see so far. This is what we're doing, this is the program, this is great, I love it, I'm interested, I'm learning. What am I going to do now? And it's almost like they get to the point where they are trying to start over. So if they could see that all the way to being able to have an affordable rental or to purchase a home, right? Get to a point where you're in your career, but you have that. If they could see that, I think a lot more of them would choose to continue that way rather than say, "I don't know what to do next after I do this. I got the certificate, and I won't fight it."
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, representatives, for taking the time and coming to see us and answering questions and.
I'll get you Safe and Supportive Schools so that you can distribute it to everybody. And if you have a grant application, let me know, we'll do a letter of support, make some phone calls.
548 vote, if you have any questions, please reach out to her at VR.
Well, thanks for having us. And it's good to get this back together, so.
Yeah, yes. We're definitely going to.
Let's do this yearly at least. And if you ever want us to come, like, just invite us, we're, we both live in town, we're both Clippers. We're both homeowners, so just let us know.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks very much. All right, sticking with the theme of going out of order, next up will be discussion of the Carousel of Light. I'd like to introduce, well, Dr. Dur is going to speak to it, but there are two members of the Carousel of Light board here. I'd like to highlight.
Yeah.
Sure. Donna, and Jimbo. Thank you for having us.
Thank you for having us. So Troy approached me about a different approach to the carousel. And I just want to say, I think it's unique, I think it's helpful, and I really would like to present this new approach and have my full support behind it. And that's to leave the carousel where it is, at Mullin Hall, but leave it permanently in that location for up to three years, which we found out that we can do, on a lease basis. And it would be through the time that they're not using it, which would be during the school calendar, that we would have a semi-structure to protect it. And, you know, one, the wear and tear on the carousel each year of taking, you know, putting it up and taking it down. You guys know it, see it, I mean, you can say that, but I see it, too. And there was times we had to shut it down this past year. And so it was, you know, if any. And so it was, um, you know, if anyone ever sees the carousel, I, I've never seen happier, happier children, and the things that make children happy make me happy. And so I am a hundred percent behind the carousel. But I think that the semi-structure, um, keeping it as a lease, um, but making it a three, three-year lease, as the town has, um, said that we could go up to a three-year lease on, um, the semi-structure, uh, and not having to wear and tear on the carousel coming up and down. Um, Principal Marianne at, uh, Mullen Hall is in full support. Um, you know, we love the carousel, it would not be in, uh, op, as always, it would not be in operation, um, during school time. Uh, it would leave it open that, um, during, uh, holidays, like Thanksgiving, or the, um, weekend holiday stroll in December. Or, you know, there would be times throughout the year that it would be there that we could actually open it up during, um, that time, when school's not in session. Um, so kind of expand the opportunities for the carousel, um, and, uh, but in the, you know, meantime, um, you know, it, it would be there, and our kids enjoy it, and the only time it would be open, um, during school time is when our children get to, uh, ride the carousel. So, um, having that advantage. But I, I think it's a good plan, uh, and I'm in support at your seat. Um, the new, um, contract, um, is listed. I can tell you, um, the, the pieces of the contract that is different from before. Um, in the first paragraph, uh, it, um, says related temporary structure. Under E, uh, we added the three years, and then the carousel may be operated open to the public each year on non-school days. Um, and that's the open to the public, not open to the public and to our school kids, where we can make an arrangement or agree. Um, then on, uh, under H, uh, additionally, a temporary removal structure may be allowed to be erected for the duration of this license, uh, which is three years. The design shall be approved by the school administration. Um, and then M is just, um, that, uh, for additional concern, the license shall be, uh, shall donate, and that's an annual prior, which we do every year. Um, I think we usually had a date there, but, um, so we just kind of left that open. So, so the contract is, is what we've agreed to, um, in the past on an annual basis. And I guess we're just, um, wanting you to consider, um, that we go with the three-year, um, lease. And so, I'm sorry, I know I talked a lot of it, I was always excited about the carousel, so, but anything you wanna add?
Actually, I, I just want to express our gratitude to the school committee. I mean, this relationship is now, I think, on ten, ten-plus years. Um, I think together we have created a, a space that kids now have memories of. Um, and, you know, we're all, we're all working to figure out what the best permanent solution is, but to be able to, um, cut down on the wear and tear and, and the cost associated. I mean, we, we operate it, we, us, uh, we operate through donations, most of them coming from our board members. Um, you know, to keep, to keep the carousel going from year to year. If you wanna visit it, it's actually in my basement right now. At, it's at Highfield. It's, uh, some of the horses are at Highfield, and the rest of them are in the basement. Um, but we, um, we are just grateful, um, that we have, you know, the ability to work with you and to be able to combine together to offer this to kids. And, um, if you have any specific questions, we're, we're happy to answer them.
I just wanted to add too, I forgot, I, I meant to start. Um, Troy, uh, wanted to be here tonight, but he is in Rockland tonight.
Oh, he way preferred me to be here.
Yes, I'd be here and be at Rockland tonight, so, uh, I envy you, but I appreciate that.
Terry?
You have some structure already underway to make the permanent change, uh?
The, the semi-structure, we, we don't, we're actually working to try to figure out what that will look like, and to make sure that, you know, if there's, you know, ever need to move it, that it's, it's able to be.
Yeah, I think we wanna invite the community to share some ideas that they might have about what that structure might be.
And our students.
Yeah.
Yes, we actually were kicking around having some of our art students, um, I mean, uh, um.
Oh, that'd be amazing, on the outside, on the fence.
Yeah. Yeah, on the outside, yeah. To, uh, to help design it and to, to make it, you know.
Yeah, because that's really the only concern. I, I, I love the idea of, you know, coming to some middle ground between what we were hoping to do ages ago and, and what we've been doing with the arm up, up and down over here. Um, so I like the idea, but I am concerned about what this, what it will look like, um, if it's there all year. That is a beautiful, beautiful building, and, um, the campus deserves to be beautiful. So finding something that is semi-whatever it is, what's it called? Semi-hermitian or whatever, that is, um, is fitting for the, the beauty of that space, um, would be my only concern.
I certainly agree with that, because the horses are so beautiful.
Right, same here.
And I would encourage anybody in the entire community who is watching tonight to go to Hyde Field Home, having an Americana exhibit. And it runs through Main Street, and I believe five of the horses are there, and you can see the beautiful restoration that was done by Joseph Gregg, who has done a lot of restoration at Hyde Field Home, of these horses. And really like to come up closely and appreciate the craftsmanship that Lance Shangle did when he created these as a, as a, for, for his daughter, when she decided she wanted to have a little carousel or something. Um, but, uh, we certainly wouldn't wanna build a structure that didn't, uh, satisf- satisfy the dignity of these horses and the beauty of them. I can assure you, whatever it is, everyone agrees with us.
And I see it says in the name.
And we did build it, that we would have a big table.
And I'm sure that, that.
And I would want that to say to you in committee administration.
Okay.
It's really cool that you're pulling the community in, also maybe now considering our wonderful art students.
So I feel like I was pretty outspoken the last time this, uh, thought came up to, um, donate school land to the carousel. I think, I really thought that I didn't wanna set a precedent. I was concerned with the location, I was concerned with the size of the building. Um, I'm still concerned, like, I, I wanna be, you know, I want the community, and I, um, I'm concerned with the, the shroud that we're gonna put around it. But I also am not heartless to the fact that I see the wear and tear on the horses, and you had to shut it down, and, you know. I, um, I, I'm hopeful that this is a nice common ground. I would have, uh, hoped maybe some other, um, outcomes could have been offered, uh, on Main Street or other places could have worked out. But I think in the meantime, um, we're kind of custodians as well of the carousel, and, um, I think this is a, a good, um, a, a good compromise for now, so.
Thank you. All right, so will this come back to us in a week?
It will, this is just discussion, yeah. So we can, um, do some research and, um, go from there. Any other questions, Mike? We, no, okay, I'm gonna say no. All right, thank you both so much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for talking.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next up will be the, um, presentation of the eclipse party.
I'd like to introduce, uh, Chris Brothers. Uh, she'll, um, present, uh, the plans for Falmouth High School.
Will we allow practice of screen sharing after COVID? Want to do it every single day? Okay, so thank you for inviting me this evening. I'm here excited about, like, this incredibly exciting thing, or at least I'm incredibly excited about it, and you are too. Um, and that's an event that's happening in about six weeks, and we have creatively called it the E-Clippers, Solar Eclipse Watch Party. And this is just starting to, like, kinda come out into the news within the last week or two. I've been seeing more and more coverage of it in radios and newspapers and so forth. But on April eighth, which is Monday, there's going to be a partial, um, solar eclipse in Falmouth. And it's going to start at, um, two sixteen exactly, um, in the afternoon, and go until four thirty-nine. And so when I saw this information, I was like, this is a perfect thing to do at the Lawrence School, because we can take every kid out in the last period of the day and have them watch the, um, eclipse. And so that's kind of where this whole idea started. Um, the maximum of the eclipse is gonna, uh, be happening about three-thirty in the afternoon. So how many of you know that we actually had an eclipse in October? One person. It was not so spectacular. First of all, it was on a Saturday, so there wasn't, like, an opportunity to, you know, really do something with students. Um, and here in Falmouth, it was only about ten percent. So unless you were actually, like, out in park, like, peeking out in glasses like I was, you didn't even notice that anything was going on. Um, but this, this map shows the eclipse that happened in October, which is this one here on the left. And this is the path of the eclipse that will be happening in April. And it's, it's significant for a couple reasons, and one is that, um, it's through much more densely populated part of the country. And so a lot of people are gonna be within the totality of this eclipse, unfortunately not Falmouth, but we're gonna be very close. Um, and it's estimated that a hundred and fifty million people, which is just under half the country, will be within two hundred miles of totality. It's also gonna be visible in every single state, including Alaska and Hawaii, little teeny pieces. So it's pretty amazing that the whole country, uh, can see this all at the same time. Um, I'll tell you the other reason why it's amazing in there. So if I can get this little animation to work. You know, it always works if you test it yourself, and then when you're in front of the room. So firstly, I need to just make the sun a little bit bigger.
Too big, sorry.
My, um, trackpad is not functioning at all. Oh, come on. Oh, there, a little bit, that's a little bit better. Okay, good enough. Um, and then, uh, this might be a problem. Okay, so this is showing you what this will look like in Falmouth. This site has animations for two thousand cities in the United States, including Falmouth, which is pretty cool. So at two sixteen, the eclipse is gonna start. I want you to keep a track of that, um, clock on the bottom, right? For me, anyway. Um, because two fifteen to two forty-five, that's what the eclipse will look like. So that's what the Lawrence School, um, students will see. And so that's why we said, God, a eclipse party at the Lawrence School. And I'm like, oh, but wait a minute, what if we got all the Lawrence and Morse Pond kids together at the same time? Because, you know, they ride the buses together, and they dismiss at about three, and that's what it'll look like at three. Awesome, so let's get some eclipse glasses for Morse Pond too. And then, remember that three-thirty maximum? That's the dismissal time for most of the elementary schools, or the pre-clubs do. And this is what it'll look like at three-thirty. Yeah, there we go, that's the maximum. So this is gonna be really pretty awesome. It is gonna be noticeable. Um, so it's gonna be back to this one, should we, yeah, probably just close, now go. Oops, no, I don't wanna, no, just, thank you. Um, okay, so that's how we got to the point of, uh, spring. From the original plan of just Lawrence School, and thank you to Sonia and Lori, because when we, when we presented it to them, they're like, yes, what we doing? Um, in all honesty, not all superinventors are quite on board with this.
I never understand that at all.
No, just, you know, just games. Um, okay, so one of the questions is, why don't solar eclipses happen more often? Because you'd think they would happen every time we have a new moon, right? You know, those between us and the sun, why not? Well, that has to do with some really complicated geometry, but essentially, the orbit of the moon and the apparent orbit of the Earth and the sun, um, only intersect twice a year. And a very fun thing you can do with elementary school kids is get two loops and have them show how the two orbits interact with each other. So that creates two eclipse seasons. And eclipses can only happen within that two-to-three-month time period at each of those intersections. And also because of that, you can only have five solar eclipses of any type, total, partial, whatever, um, annular during the year. So the fact that we had two in one year in the United States is actually pretty rare. And even rarer is that in any given place on the planet, uh, we'll only have a total solar eclipse once every three-hundred-and-seventy-five to one-thousand years. So, these things don't happen very often. In fact, the next, um, eclipse in Falmouth, this was on an earlier slide, that will be visible in the United States isn't until twenty forty-four, so that's twenty years from now. That's why we wanna do this now with kids. Another cool thing is that our Earth is the only planet in the solar system that actually has, um, total solar eclipses. And that's because, again, of a weird geometry thing, which is that the sun is four hundred times bigger than the moon, but also four hundred times further, um, from the Earth than the moon is. And so that gives us a ratio of one. And essentially, it means that the moon has the ability to completely block the sun. And other planets, their moons are too small to be able to do that. And another cool thing is that the moon is actually moving away from us. Not very fast, three-point-eight centimeters per year, which is, you know, like that, maybe. But significantly, it means that at some point, the moon's gonna be too far away to create total solar eclipses anymore, but you don't need to worry about this too much, because it's not gonna be for six-hundred-twenty years. But this is getting a lot of play in newspapers right now. Watch the eclipse now, because you'll never see it again. So one of the things that we're doing, um, here is making sure that the kids are safe when they're watching the eclipse. And part of the rationale behind this is because honestly, we thought, all these kids are gonna start watching the eclipse at school, and they're gonna get a bus, and they're gonna go home, and then they're gonna be watching at home. And how we make sure that they're safe at home too. And we do that by giving every pair, uh, every kid a pair of those, stick with them. And there's also a multiplier effect here, because we're hoping when they go home, parents watch with them, younger or older siblings, maybe the neighbors next door, or dog. I've seen pictures of dogs in eclipse classes. So every, um, student and every staff person in the district will get a pair of eclipse glasses. And in case you're wondering, I have them today. Yes, I'm not gonna forget you. So we created these, um, solar eclipse teaching kits. And this is, um, sort of a joint effort of the Lawrence and high school, um, science teachers. And they have all kinds of cool things that the elementary school teachers, um, can use to teach about eclipses. And in fact, um, we now have twenty of these, and so they're gonna be available to each school, sort of in different renditions, depending on the age of the kids. So, um, this is some other ways that you can watch eclipses, and you've probably well seen these, like, pinhole projectors or things, and they're in shoeboxes, so we made a whole bunch of these. It's PD. To give out, uh, to the elementary school teachers along with these kits. And another cool thing is that you can use, which is essentially the pinhole idea, is a cylinder. And so every one of these holes will project the image of the eclipse. Um, you can kinda see that in this picture. If you notice, they're sort of crescent shaped, that's showing effectively eclipse. And another cool thing that I learned about from, uh, NASA, an SDA program that I've involved in, is if you use these very fun mini disco balls, each one of those mirrors will project the image of the eclipse. And so this is a way that you can watch, or a lot of kids can watch at once, because if you hold this up against a wall, it will project onto the wall. So that's kind of cool. And a super low-tech way is just to put pieces of cardboard or, you know, cards or even just plain white paper, put a little hole in one and hold it above another, and project through that as well. It's not really as much as a disco ball. Uh, but anyway, we have an assortment of things for each, um, school to kind of use, because they're gonna be out there, you know, for half hour or hour, who knows how long they'll be out there, but different ways that kids can kind of play around, trying to see what the eclipse looks like. Um, we also have purchased books, because especially at the elementary school level, a lot of science is kind of taught through trade books. So we have a couple of different, um, books that we've bought. Again, these are, you know, different, for different grade levels. And so these two are for the elementary school. And this is a really beautiful book where the kid, um, has, well, they go out and start watching eclipse, and it becomes a community eclipse party, and it's exactly what we're trying to accomplish. And this is one where a boy goes camping with his dad, this is the eclipse. And a slightly higher grade level, this is for Morse Pond and the Lawrence School. And this is a book about two grandparents that go see the eclipse, and then they share that with the grandchildren. This book is fun, because there's all kinds of, like, demonstrations of how to model eclipses. And so that's another thing that we're doing to the teachers, is a sun. I won't turn on, because this is during the break. And a moon. And need one more person to do this. And a globe, so you can, hands. Ah, I won't do it. I know you all wanna play with this stuff. Yeah, and you can model the eclipse. And also, a fun thing you can do is what if it ends up here in this orbit? You don't have it, what if it's here closer, it will be total? And what if it's here further away? Because then we. Because the moon changes in distance during its orbit. If it's further away, then you get an annual eclipse. And the kids can play around with all that. Manipulatives are always a good thing. So, and then we, this presentation is part of one that we're doing for the elementary school teachers. We were supposed to do on February 13th, and we had to reschedule, thanks, so it's noted. But we've given them links to a bunch of different sites where they can learn more about the eclipses and then watch videos and see animations and so forth. And there's also a lot of citizen science kind of things that are possible for students to tap into. And a lot of them involve students like recording observations that they see happening during the eclipse. So you can, you will see, if you're close enough, and I think 90% might be close enough, you will see the sky actually getting darker. It won't be like totally dark like we'll be in the path of totality. And weirdly, like, a lot of animals, they're, like birds start singing at certain light levels in the morning and stop at certain light levels in the evening. And so you will see that sort of transition of like diurnal daytime sounds to nighttime sounds, and then back to daytime sounds, and kids can record that. I mean, not just write it down and record, but audibly record that. And also changes in data. So a cool thing that I just saw recently is you can take the lab class, which we had at the high school, connect it to the temperature and UV probes, and you can see both of those things dropping during eclipses and then going back up. And in this particular museum where they did that, they had a graph drawn on a wall, like outside wall of their building with chalk, and the kids went over and plotted this during eclipses. So there's a lot of math activities, they can go on with this, there's reading, there's geography sorts of things, and it can be very interdisciplinary. And that's our hope, that we give the teachers some fun stuff and some good resources. This is kind of more like a teacher-level guide to what's going on with the eclipse. And hopefully, they'll do some of these activities with their kids in the weekly up-to-date eclipse. This is just an idea to have kids do some writing activities related to the eclipse. And one last thing that I want to say is that Thursday, Andrew Cousins, who's a physics teacher at the school, he and I are going to be leading eclipse workshop through Woodsall Science and Technology Education Partnership, also known as WISTEP. And we also will have a solar telescope and a sun spotter, which is a very expensive pinhole projector. And we now have a solar telescope that can take photos. So we may try to do that. And so anyway, all this was grant funded through WISTEP, through the MIT Club of Git Code, and through the Allison-Ermine Level Future Fund and the Self-Fund Area Bird Sanctuaries. It's a very long name. But actually, I should really thank them, because they funded the majority of this. And they've also given us a substantial amount of funding every year for probably 12 years or so now. Yeah, going back to the donations, so it's got to be at least 15 years. So, question?
Okay.
Heather?
Of course.
I'll pass these around.
Ooh, yeah, thank you.
I guess not, not.
If you're a staff person, you're going to get one. But if you're, if you're school committee, help yourself.
Can we give one to Gilda? I feel like that's...
Oh, absolutely.
I hope Gilda, you'll join us for the party.
Oh, it's going to have the best photo op ever.
That was supposed to be mine.
They're all seeing that.
Oh, you leave that on so that they don't...
That's just a little ball right there.
Yeah, so my question slash comment, I'll just say, like, I love that you're, you've started down this path and Laurie and Sonya, that you're supportive, and I would encourage maybe considering going even further. This is something that's not going to happen for our students here in Falmouth for at least another 20 years. And I'm really sad for Morse Pond and Lawrence students who are going to get that close and then have to get on a bus. And then also a little worried that they're going to get on a bus where there's the least adult supervision of the entire day with their glasses and try to look out the window in the dark. And so I would love to find ways to extend the day in some way, offer an after-school something, so that they're able to actually have the whole experience of, say, at Morse Pond. I know a lot of kids are already there.
Yeah.
Till 4:15, they'd be skipping whatever their after-school activity, but Monday's already an after-school activity, say, at Morse Pond, like, parents are used to picking up, there's late buses, there's... So I would just encourage you guys to think about how you can go all in and actually give these kids the full eclipse experience. And also, like, I guess the high schoolers are kind of on their own, because they're already home, but like...
More likely, they're going to be out on the sports fields, and hopefully, at some point during that time, their practice or whatever, that they will be able to see the eclipse. And it is one of the reasons why we bought every kid a pair of glasses, because regardless of whether they stay after school, they're on the bus home, they get home, because of the sagging dismissal times, kids will be in all those places, that they do have the glasses to take home with them. And the number one thing that we really have to educate the kids about is not looking at the eclipse with their bare eyes. There's actually a lot of overhyped concern about that. It's no more dangerous to look at an eclipse than it is to look at the sun on any given day. That's a fallacy that's somehow more dangerous. And on any given day, if you actually try to look at the sun, you almost really can't do it. You look at the sun, you don't, you know, your body protects you. But we do want to make sure that kids get that message. The other thing is if you, somebody that got a pair of glasses, put them on right now.
Oh, you can't see anything.
You can't see anything. So it's not like kids are going to be walking around with these things on. Really can't see anything.
No, I mean, I guess me loving this, like, I would love to see all of our students, like, down on the field at the rec center, right? For the afternoon, and do this. Or for that matter, like, in my family, we literally talked about the fact that you can leave here at 8 o'clock, be in Vermont at the point of totality by noon, be there for the whole thing, and be home by 10 o'clock on Monday night. Like, we've had high school students who've done the equivalent to go to New York for an art museum. Not saying the whole high school needs to do that, but, you know, I think...
Yeah, this is something we've discussed a little bit. Andrew and I are, we're thinking about having an eclipse party at the high school for any kids that want to stay there, because they're all leaving before this even starts. But we are at the high school also. I should say, we're providing all this educational material, and we're going to the elementary schools to present to the faculty meetings and, you know, basically this presentation I just gave you. And seven through, actually, yeah, seven through 12, possibly five through 12, where we have science teachers. We all have developed eclipse lessons for our classes. Okay, don't tell Desi this, but I told the teachers, I don't care if it's not in your standard, this is an important thing we teach kids about this day. Spend a day teaching your class about eclipses, they're still going to pass out gas. And this, you know, this is important enough, special enough, that all the science teachers are important with doing this in our classes. By the way, it does actually go into sixth and eighth grade curriculum. Hardly justifiable for biology, but honestly, the anatomy teacher is like, you know what? I have to do something about the structure of the eye and why you shouldn't watch eclipses without glasses. And so the teachers are finding ways to sort of pull this, pull this into their framework. So we're hoping that, you know, at the high school, we can maybe do something for kids who want to stay. You know, not every kid's going to be excited about this. What's wrong with them? And there is also a program, I should let you know about this. NASA has a program for public libraries, for public libraries, and they have given out millions of eclipse glasses across the country. And so the library here got some of those, and they are going to be hosting a watch party that afternoon. And also, the Quaype National Australian Research Reserve. So there are a few other like pockets for people, and then maybe more that I don't know about between now and then, other places where people can go, you know, to watch, watch this as sort of a community event.
Kelly?
I just have a clarifying question. So even high schoolers are getting glasses?
Yes.
Okay, great. Awesome.
I ordered 3,500 pairs.
Valleys.
Which surprisingly doesn't take up that much room.
Well, I'm glad to see that eclipse viewing items have come a long way from my first eclipse at Morse Pond as a fifth grader, which was with, you know, two pieces of paper.
Exactly.
Don't look up. But I remember to this day feeling how excited it was and the things we learned, and I'm so, I'm excited for the kids. I'm excited to see it through my kids' eyes, I'm excited to hear about it with the district, I'm excited they are excited, and...
We're all excited.
We're all excited.
It's so cool. Like, it doesn't, a huge eclipse like this doesn't happen often enough, you know, it's not like, whatever.
So my first solar eclipse, I was probably about seven or eight years old, it was a total solar eclipse, and I remember it very vividly.
Yeah.
The whole neighborhood was dark.
Yeah.
Crickets started calling, you know, it was eerie and strange and very memorable.
There was a partial eclipse, I think in 2005, in like the, no, that's July, the summer of 2017.
Seventeen.
And I remember, only because I was doing training for work, so I wasn't in the basement of an hospital, but how the crickets started and how the birds changed and how the leaves, like, the shadows, like, everything, so I'm excited.
That was just a partial.
And it was, right, and I, I mean, to hear, I want to like hear it from the kids, I want to hear their experience, so it's great.
Some of you may remember Nana, it's changed due to the weather from Nigeria. That was the day she arrived. Yeah, how bad, I don't care how Jedi you are, you're not trying to watch eclipse with me.
It was like midday, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was like...
That was, yeah.
That's great. Awesome. Thank you. Always. Thank you. All right. All right, next up, it's on three, all right, now on four, the presentation of advanced course enrollment, and I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Durk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Dr. Kelly and I are going to present. She's going to give it up here for us. So in the fall, in the fall, Sonya and I did the MCAS updates and shared a lot of information. And at the time, we said that we would come back after we had the data for advanced courses and share information on that. So because this is important, this is part of our goals, and to, just, it's about the, you know, academic experience for students and making sure that, you know, we have access to challenging material for as many students as possible, so increasing the opportunities that students have access to advanced courses. And so I think we're going to show some data here that's going to show that we're actually making a lot of progress. So just to start, I know we use this slide now in almost every presentation coming back to. This is about the framework of student success in Falmouth. The Clipper Experience is, actually encompasses our tagline. So the community committed to excellence. It's a renewed focus this year on high-quality instruction and academic rigor, engaging all students in challenging hands-on learning. And the every student every day, just that commitment to personalized learning for every student and the social emotional wellness for our students. And then we did, everything that we do is our diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, and improving that two-way communication and the partnerships that we have here in Falmouth.
So just as you've seen the Clipper Experience graphic previously, you've also seen this, which is a reminder of the first focus area in our district goals for this year. And specifically around that focus area, we wanted to focus deeper, as Laurie mentioned, on the Clipper Experience and really recommitting ourselves to personalized learning and our pursuit of excellence for every student every day. In doing that, we had provided a bit of a rationale, and I know that you also have it in front of you, but one of the things we wanted to make sure that we were doing was being incredibly intentional about not only the moment in time a student may find himself in, but I think what really resonated and made a connection for me, too, was when Representative Biero was talking about his experience and the pipeline and being able to see your way forward. And I think that's part of what we want in the Clipper Experience, and that's part of what comes through in this. And some of these advanced courses that students have can become the springboard in that pipeline. So it talks about changing world of learning and of work, and we're trying to respond to that. And this is one way in which we can do that. So we had set out at the same time, and we shared the goal and the rationale, implementation benchmarks. And so we kind of called out here in color, really in that first piece, is about achieving excellence, examining our curricula, our instructional resources, and ensuring we have access to challenging learning experience as an academic rigor. And then, along with that, having students be able to see themselves take risks in their learning. So we shared with you back in June, like, the successes, AP human geography, incredible numbers that we saw, and really how well the students fare. That's a piece of this story as well, as we're building those opportunities for our kids. And so just to help a little bit more context, let me down, setting the stage for Laurie to share all the stuff. Two measures out of what Desi allows us to use as measures of advanced coursework are in our program of studies. So that's why they're highlighted here in pink. Advanced placement courses, courses sponsored and approved by the College Board, count as our advanced coursework. And then courses that students take for dual enrollment credit with either a two-year or four-year institution. Those two count when we talk about all the numbers and figures. And the reason others here don't, we chose an AP over IB, most schools pick a pathway. And then also, when you look at the piece about approved vocational technical cooperative education, because we're comprehensive, even though we have CTE programs, we haven't been able to kind of mention there in that requirement. And it does mention other rigorous courses, and our teams spent a bit of time even trying to figure out how we could elevate and recognize our honors classes, because there's a real clear threshold that Desi's trying to enforce around partnerships with college institutions or through the College Board, where those courses get recognized. So just wanted to share a little more on that measure.
So this is exciting. So we have the Falmouth and state experience to compare. So as we did with the MCAS data in the fall, we were going back to that baseline before the COVID, and then post, and how much we've grown. So if you look above the line, this is, we've increased the 4.1% over last year's data. If we go back to below the line before COVID, since the 1819 school year, we actually have increased a 7.7% increase. And you can see the comparison to this overall state growth. And so we're pretty proud of the growth that we have seen. And this is the number...
Can I ask a quick verifying question? The 72.4 and the 65.8, that's percent of students taking advanced classes?
Yes. That's the increase, the increase in the number of students that are taking advanced courses, 11th and 12th grade. So in, yeah.
Wait.
Look, we'll go to the next, okay, yeah. I'll go back in, the next slide will help to...
It's just 11th and 12th grade now?
Just 11th and 12th. So this is Desi's, I should...
Yeah.
That's Desi's. That's Desi's. So Desi's accountability criteria, you know, in addition to attendance, participation, the MCAS scores, they also have an accountability for 11th and 12th grade students taking advanced courses.
So that doesn't even count all of our AP history kids who are taking it in tenth?
That's correct. That's correct. And even AP computer science, we offered that, opened it to every, we had ninth and 10th graders taking it, and that doesn't count.
And it doesn't count. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So if we go to the next slide, though. So here, you can actually see the growth from 2021 to 22 and then to 23. And we actually saw growth year over year, 10 out of the 11 categories here.
Is this also just 11th and 12th graders?
This is 11th and 12th. You can see in the economic disadvantaged, that was the title. And then you can see in 22 where it moved to the low-income title. Same group of students, but they just changed the name of it. So that's why there's a two-line to cover those, to cover that area. So you can see with the students with disabilities that, that we did actually from 22 to 23 go down. But if you'll see the incredible gain from 21 to 22, but still a gain in 23 over 21. And then disappointing out incredible under the multirace, non-Hispanic, Latino student group. Two years ago, we were 45.5 and we're at 92.9, the increase in the students that are actually accessing the courses. Even our high need students, we have, we have steady growth.
So can I ask more?
Yes.
So there's no declassification that is making that number so high? Because it's a really high increase for mixed race, non-expanding.
No, no.
That's just.
That's the same definition.
Just making sure.
Yes, nothing changed.
Because it's really high.
It is. The number, but the number of students. Yes, it's also about our students that are within five in that category.
Can I?
Can I pass for a second? One second, Mike has a question.
Oh, oh, good call. Mike?
Yes, thank you. Dr. Melissa, if I could throw you, Dr. Dor, is there any chance that we can, and I agree with Kelly's point about that, that 30% increase is abnormal? Is there a way that we can get these numbers with no identifying things, but just number of students in each of these? Because, does that make sense? Like if we went from three students to four, it would be a 30% increase. But not now, but at some point in time, if we could get something like that to see the actual numbers?
As long as it's not identifiable.
No.
We'll actually, we will share the information for you.
Thank you.
Can I, can I ask, I think kind of looking at the growth and the percentages, we also want to think about the growth in offerings that we've had along the way too. So I think we're up to, I think when I sat down and did it, it's 17 AP courses. And then there's additional ones that send students they access through virtual high school because they're one-off opportunities and FAMIT high school is trying to support them and acting to that. And then also the number of dual enrollment opportunities and some of the grant funds that places like Master Airtime or even Kickstarter can be brought in, that we have some students that might be accessing those online that hadn't previously been able to access. So yes, we can do the numbers, but there's also some other variables that are just leading to increases in the rates.
Is there also something in here, just to make sure, because I know folks will ask questions all about statistics? Is there any chance that in here, any of these, like if a student took, you know, an AP US history class and then also took another class, is there any chance that they're counted twice? Or is this just strictly how many students enrolled in any number of AP courses?
My understanding in reading the definitions is that it's a count by a student as long as they've taken at least one, because that's the criteria that we, to be accountable to measure.
So they took three, there should be counting.
They took six, they.
Okay, thank you.
And that is a very good point. We have a number of students that carry five or six. So as soon as you said six, that is not unusual. I mean, we weren't, when we talk to students, that's the kind of load that they actually carry. It's incredible. Yeah, so I'm glad you brought that up, gave us a chance to actually point it out.
Yeah, and I agree with Mike. I think actually like the raw numbers would be nice to see too as well.
Yeah, I feel like I'm negative Nelly today, even when it's an eclipse party, but. There's a lot of incredible growth here. And there's growth certainly among our African-American and Hispanic-Latino students, but it's nowhere close to the growth of, in say, our Asian students or our multirace, non-Hispanic students. And so I guess that sparks curiosity and I'm curious what you guys are thinking about, looking into that, following up on that.
Kind of bothered if Chris just like. So Henry, Dr. Harris, Chris Brothers, myself, we wrote to FEF to secure a grant and we had a workshop from the College Board in San Francisco. It was a full-day workshop just focused on equity in AP enrollment and doing that sort of bigger data dive into what is the landscape of AP enrollment like in FAMIT? What goals do we want around that and how do you move forward? And we had a number of teachers all the way, grade, I think, grade five through grade 12 together. And so that's one of the action plans we're trying to think through. So it's great to see the numbers, right? But we also have to understand the stories within those numbers. I actually think if that conversation were happening and then we set some goals around that and we're very thankful to FEF for giving us that opportunity.
And even some of the data that we got from the audit, you asked to be used to see what might be some qualifying reasons for this. And so we'll begin that as well to make those assessments.
I want another, besides the potential impact of small numbers, the other thing you can't see here is intersecting identities of these students, right? Because there's also not the same kind of growth. It's growth and it's impressive in economically disadvantaged students, but it's not the same kind of growth as in some of the other categories. And so where there might be, yeah, multiple factors that translate.
And just to kind of wrap up, just to know that this is a journey. Our partnership is out there sailing and we are not going to dock. We're going to continue to reach out to students and offer those challenging courses and encourage with supports, you know, we really can be successful.
Great.
Can I throw in my plug a third time? Pay for some of the tests they have to take. We'll keep you buying some money.
I will second that. And forever.
It's going to be mine.
Diamond medal.
Buying some money.
Yeah. Sorry, I know it's a little late tonight. You mentioned all these classes and I, this is data from DESI, but we've been doing other data collection around AP performance. And I'm curious what the kind of evaluation or assessment with the introduction this year of honors courses available at the ninth grade level and kind of assessing how that impacts students during school.
It's been a great conversation with the department heads and Dr. Harris at, you know, curriculum council meetings. And so we're trying to, we want students to finish up this year, see who persisted through the year, look at course enrollments. But we've had a number of those conversations about departments or grade levels within departments that have honors and AP, some have honors or AP and what's the sort of articulation of that and who are the students gravitating to the different ones? And I think, you know, when we go back and look at the rationale around risk-taking, right? Also helping students see that they can be successful. And so those have been a lot of the conversations that we've had alongside the data, the data dives. And, you know, it's been great. And each time we sort of peel a layer, kind of like the conversation right over here, when we have a conversation with Dr. Orin, she's like, okay, now here's another layer. So we've really enjoyed being able to peel that back and having a growing team of people looking at it. Because the more, right, we all look at it and have that, that common conversation about it, I think the faster we can make some changes.
I like that the conversation's not just high school, it's middle school, where we're building up the capacity and just say, well, what's high school that knows their capacities and they start early and truly get the skills, then when in high school, they're rocking. So.
Yeah, and you know, that's the piece that I think of. Like it's great that we're looking at this by measures that DESI is using, but those are not the measures that we are using. And so having the numbers, looking at kids that are taking these classes in ninth grade and 10th grade, that matters to us, even though it doesn't, for some reason, matter to them, which I don't really understand. But I would like to be measuring us the way that we care, not just to meet some arbitrary decision that DESI has made.
So I think, I mean, really, I appreciate that, Kelly. I don't think that any of us started this because trying to be some kind of mission with this.
Yeah.
There's incredible, there's incredible discussions going on. And I really, you know, the team here has, you know, they've been out there. They're talking with the department heads, department heads are having conversations with the teachers. I mean, the discussions are really rich discussions. We are where we are because everyone's looking at it. They're looking at the data, they're looking at opportunities, they're questioning, why aren't certain students in the classes? What supports can we put in place to make sure they're successful in the classes? Those conversations have been going on now for a few years and we're seeing progress because we're having discussions. So now I really appreciate the team that really has continued the conversation. It's been ongoing for years now when we said, when we started looking at this. So that's.
It's nice. Thank you. Thank you. And when you have the raw numbers instead of the percentages, can you send it to all of us?
Yes.
If you're able to do it.
Right, we've got to look at the, the end.
Protecting student.
But we'll, we'll give you as much information as we can.
That's great. Thank you. All right, moving on to now, the discussion of the capital plan articles for town meeting, April 2024.
Yeah, and I'm going to share a screen, but Paul is going to.
Okay, so got the projects. So you want the.
Thirty-one, yeah. There we go.
Is this one you want?
That's one you want, yeah. So did it just enough the, I was talking about the need for the North FAMIT roof. So since our last discussion, our last curriculum meeting, we did hire Open Yum, Lefiel Associates, Lefiel have been there. It's also did the T-Ticket roof project. And they have been working with us on a number of different projects in the interim. So they, Lefiel was working with us on the valuation of Moss Pond, North FAMIT, East FAMIT and so on. So we did go through an RFQ process. We knew thirteen candidates, all of them could do this, did the job and do it well. Nationally known project managers. We focused on three already experienced with FAMIT. But we ended up with Lefiel giving the history specifically working the school system. That does not lead us to them going forward on different projects. It's just that they had done this internal work between T-Ticket and the valuation of the three roofs that to get this done in a tiny business, we wanted to move forward. Likewise, SLAM Collaborative is, will be the architect on this project. They too did the T-Ticket project and worked extremely hard to ensure the roof. So again, for speediness and consistency and knowledge, we chose them to move forward. This number, 4.915 million, is, it's still solid right at this time. We expect that we'll, in the next, by the end of March, have a, what they call 50% estimate. So once about 50% of the design architectural work is done, we'll get an update on this number. I don't expect that number to go above it. But you may be aware, last, last, we met with the finance, they likewise unanimously approved, continued the approval as well with 4.915 million. So that's in a FAMIT roof. We do, at this point, we're looking for starting this project if all goes well with the town and the April town meeting and the ballot that falls, that we start this project as soon as spring is out. So we expect it to be completed by the end of summer. The other project, which actually won't be new funding, we're actually going to use some of the remaining funds from the T-Ticket roof project that we've not spent to cover this, is the beam replacement at the East FAMIT Elementary School. So as some of you saw, when you toured the building, the beam in the cafeteria rests directly on the window of the cafeteria. And it's the weight of the beam, it's sort of blowing the window out. We've had engineers and architects look at this. We're in a good shape to go, to do this in the summer. We're monitoring it all the time. But essentially they'll pull this beam out, replace it with a longer beam and replace the roof that, in that small area, that's, needs to be cut to get access to the beam. So this is a $60,000 project. What you'll see on the town articles for April is just a trade for money from the T-Ticket roof surplus to the East FAMIT beam.
So. Paul, I have a quick question about the East FAMIT. Is that going to change, how is the integrity of the window in the cafeteria?
The architects and engineers think the windows can, is safe.
Okay.
It's good.
Okay.
We don't have to replace that.
Okay. That's great, yes.
It is. It's a big window, it'd be expensive to repair. It can be, it's not noticeable from a visual perspective, but it is when you're looking close up. So. So those are the two projects. And the other reallocations, sorry, this one. There's a reallocation of monies from $75,000, that's the top line, is going to come, the large parking lot lights, we can reallocate. That's a $300,000 article. And I'll show you how we're spending that money on the bottom piece of this. But essentially, there's a $300,000 article to replace the large parking light. The high-end, if we went, you know, with a weight cushion, it'd be $225. We've had architects and engineers on that project that come up with the estimate. So it gives us $75,000 cushion we can comfortably reallocate to another project. The tennis court project, it's really the punch list that's remaining on this project. And we've got, we reserved all the remaining funds that we need to pay for the completion of this project. So we'll be reallocating about $100,000 from this project. And then there's two minor amounts of money, $1,500 from the large exterior facade, another $1,500 roughly from T-Ticket, it's best this bigger project. Those monies will, in total, $178,000 in previous capital articles that now that can be reallocated. And where we're using the money is in the Unibet project for Moss Pond. So the Moss Pond Unibet project was roughly $900,000 in the original article. The work was done this summer. And the total amount that we needed for that was about $112,000 in additional funds to complete that project. The other is Moss Pond Fire alarm, which we redid. That, by the time we get the funds from the town, in the original estimate, the price on that went up significantly. So we, you know, it cost us in total about $69,000. And we're reallocating some of this capital to pay about $40,000 of that and the budget will hand to the remainder. And then the third piece of their project is the long school elevator. The long school elevator hasn't been completed yet. Uh, the long school elevator, uh, hasn't been completed yet. Uh, the reason why is that the code's changed right, right before construction actually began. So we had to install a sump pump and a grease trap to the base of the elevator. Um, and so that code change cost about twenty-three thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars. So you see in this bottom half of the screen here, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars is going to the elevator. A hundred and fifty-three thousand is going to our budget line, which is called the capital override account. And out of that hundred and fifty-three, we're spending money on the Unibet project for a hundred and twelve, and the Moss Pond Firearm for forty thousand. Uh, so, uh, it's, you know, it's getting us close to that, to because we've had budget, we've had to pay for these expenses out of our budget. Uh, I'd say, uh, in order to complete the project, so, uh, this is essentially refunding our budget for this year.
I think the important thing here is we're not asking how many to vote for new money, um, but just the reallocation, and so.
To move it.
Yeah, to move it to cover some of it.
Yeah, so that's, that's my question, is how, how this looks, like when we get our warrant, well, A, do we need to vote anything to get a warrant? And then what does it look like uh, to town meeting members? Like, will it look basically like this? A, a, a separate item under capital where we're, because usually all the capital items are all looked together.
In the, in the inter meeting, the, uh, it's not, it's not the same format that the November capital articles that you saw before that we handed out. This is all sort of four years. This graph is what you'd be seeing.
So it'll be like one article?
One article.
That explains all of this and all the transfers and.
Exactly.
Okay, so Paul might plan on doing a presentation, um, in the beginning on all of the items, uh, so that hopefully when they come up then, you know, that they'll have an understanding.
Yeah, because I can hear.
Be confused. Yeah, absolutely. And I think that's probably, I mean, the, the most important, all this is important, but just letting people know we're not asking for new money in April for capital projects.
I also feel like the moderator is pretty good about highlighting, um, this is, the school committee is not asking for more money. This is a reallocation. I think, um, you know, in your presentation, and then he reviews the, you know, briefly reviews articles as they each come up. I think, um, he's pretty good about.
Referring back to us.
Yeah, and not just for us, but for other communities in town, so. Great. Any questions, comments? Oh, Mike?
Yes, just real quickly, Paul, great job. Um, is there a, uh, an overage with the North Falmouth roof and the East Falmouth beam?
They're not overages. Those are new projects about to be launched, so that.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I, I misspoke. Are there contingency plans, ten percent, et cetera, built into that?
Exactly, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Very, it's, and I, let me just address this point. What, one of the challenges of doing project within the school system as opposed to doing it for the townwide, is that we have a very limited window to get most of these projects done, which is the summer. And then, you know, that, so if you don't get it done for that summer, if you have a project delayed for, by another year. So we have to be more conscious about building in the contingencies that Mike was just referring to in order to do that. And, uh, and so these projects that we're looking at, like the North Falmouth roof and Foggy Beam, have that contingency built into it, so, uh, we don't run into a situation like in the Unibets where we were all about.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Mike. Any other questions? Excellent. Okay. Uh, we are moving on to acting on the fiscal year twenty twenty-five school budget in the amount of fifty-eight million, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, excuse me, two hundred and twenty-two hundred thousand, four hundred and twenty-one. Is there a motion?
I'll make one.
Thank you, Terry. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Valerie. Any discussion? Another smoothie process. Oh, seeing none. Roll call because someone's remote. Start with you, Mr. Halen.
Halen, yes.
Dorfner, yes.
Jerry, yes.
Goldstone, yes.
Destin, yes.
Welch, yes.
Suzie, yes.
London, yes.
Mrs. Keith, yes. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you all. Moving on, next up, act on the fiscal year twenty twenty-five Special Education Stabilization Fund in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
I'll make one.
Terry, thank you. Margaret, you have a second? Mrs. Ketcher. Seeing none. Mike?
Uh, Halen abstain?
Dorfner, yes.
Jerry, yes.
Goldstone, yes.
Destin, yes.
Welch, yes.
Suzie, yes.
London, yes.
Mrs. Keith, yes. Thank you. Moving on to.
Wait before you act, I'm gonna, okay, we'll present something.
Yeah.
Okay, great, yeah. So, uh, for the, uh, stabilization fund for this school year, so during the budget season, the, uh, when we were talking about FY twenty-five, uh, budget, we mentioned the special education stabilization along with the, the budget, and so you know, we have been talking periodically about needing to, uh, fill our FY twenty-four budget due to that fourteen percent and some other special education increased costs, um, fourteen percent of the outer district increases here. But I, I think we have more detail that we really should share before you, um, vote, um, just, just so that you have the, the information, so I'm gonna share again. And, uh,
Just, Mike.
Speak to it. And. So this is, um, uh, asking you to approve the, the FY twenty-five, uh, for the special education stabilization for this school year budget. And Paul will share.
Can you just, uh, back up to nineteen and then I'll.
Nineteen, okay. I'm looking at, yes, but I'm just. I'm gonna press slide now. You gotta tell me what the, the slide is.
The, uh, the breakdown of the, uh, well, I, I can just, uh, speak to it for a second, but essentially, when we looked at the budget for, uh, fiscal year twenty-five, you know, and you.
I know, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's, I'm sorry. I know, now I know what you're talking about.
So, if you notice, it's the breakdown of, of salaries and non-salaried expenses by school. But this is a summary from the budget book. And, you know, the total salaries are the forty-nine ninety, um, one eighty-four thousand. Uh, but just, you know, as we're on the theme of special education cost, so the breakdown of salaries, you know, you have administration salaries are, uh, here, administration bill, you have two percent of total salaries. In-house transportation salaries, uh, which is predominantly, uh, special education related, uh, salaries for our bus drivers. It's three percent. Uh, our general education salaries overall, our teaching staffs are around sixty-four percent. For our special education salaries are about thirty-one percent of the total, uh, for the school district. And then, and the reason to bring this up is just to give you a context, because we've often talked about the need for the FY twenty-five, uh, in the context of the outer district tuition, but, you know, the special education costs overall have gone up, uh, significantly, and this is true across the state. Um, so if we go down to slide twenty-eight, uh, yeah, um, you can see where, uh, our district, uh, not our district, excuse me, our special education costs have gone up from, in two thousand eighteen, around eleven million, to two thousand and twenty-four, it's going to be estimated to around seventeen million. And, and, you know, this would keep around twenty-three percent student population of special needs. Uh, and to give you some context in that, you know, you can see in this next chart uh, where Falmouth stands, and Falmouth is to the last, uh, the, sorry, to the far left. Um, so we run eighteen, nineteen, twenty percent of our total school expenditures, uh, roughly, uh, for special education. Uh, and if you look at the state, which is the next uh, uh, set of bar charts, say, they're about twenty-two percent. And then you can see up here, going across the cake, um, is at our, looks slightly higher than we are. Uh, so that, you know, this, our point of this is, you know, with the, the growth in special need population and the impact that it has on the budget, that too is a factor in us drawing down this five billion, twenty-five thousand. Uh, and it's, uh, you know, it's so important perspective to keep in mind. So with that.
That's, that's pretty efficient, so.
That's great. Thank you. Very hopeful. Okay, now, we're going to, uh, act on the fiscal year twenty twenty of FY twenty-five. Thank you for the presentation. Is there a motion? Terry, thank you. Is there a second?
So.
Uh, any discussion?
Melissa, just quickly, you froze up and I missed what the motion was. I'm sorry.
Uh, Terry made a motion to, um, act on the fiscal year twenty twenty-four Special Education Stabilization Fund, which was the presentation that, uh, Paul Dard just made previously. And then Margaret seconded it. And I asked if there was any further discussion. Okay. Do you have any discussion or comment or, no? Okay.
Heather. I have a question that is maybe better for another time, but I haven't seen that comparison of, um, to other districts and statewide, the percentage of our funds that go to specialized as a function of total, and would love to dig into that and understand why ours is lower than state, um, the state average, especially given the, what we've been seeing in terms of the, the increase in the significant population needing, um, special education services. Okay.
Okay. Roll call. Mike?
Halen abstain?
Dorfner, yes.
Terry, yes. Goldstone, yes. Destin, yes. Welch, yes.
Suzie, yes.
London, yes.
Mrs. Keith, yes. Uh, great. Thank you all.
I just wanted to, like, you know, because of the whole timing, we actually went, uh, presented to the, um, the finance committee first. Um, their vote was pending your votes on all of this, uh, but they did pass everything unanimously. Um, so that was, um, went very well. Thank you, Paul. You did a nice job for the finance committee.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we're going to discuss an act on a statement of interest from Massachusetts School Building Authority, M B, excuse me, MSBA, for the Moss Pond school roof. After dur.
Pass it over, Paul. Thank you.
Miss Kevin.
So as we mentioned, there were three roofs that we studied, uh, that started off as North Falmouth, East Falmouth, and Moss Pond. Moss Pond, we just recently got back analysis, uh, you know, the, uh, overall roof size is about a hundred and three thousand square feet. The bulk of the roof, or about sixty-three thousand square feet of that roof, is from nineteen sixty-three, so it's, it's pretty old. And, uh, and, uh, there's been one, only one small piece, about nine thousand square feet, that has, that has actually been replaced. Um, even the newer wing of that building, which was nineteen ninety-eight, uh, that's the original roof, so. Um, so funding for roof projects, uh, there are two windows to apply for MSBA funding. One is about to close on March first. And next window of availability would be next January, closing March first of January twenty-five, uh, March twenty-five. Uh, and then it's two-year delay. Uh, and so given the age of the roof, uh, there's a limit that the MSBA will only fund today roofs that are twenty-five years older. Uh, there's a pool of about a hundred and fifty million dollars they're making available under this accelerated rated repair program. In order for us to apply, both the board of selectmen and the school committee have to pass the resolution that you have in front of you as a statement of interest. Uh, and then they will, then proceed with reviewing the application. How the process works is that they will then go through all the applications, come do site visits in August and September, and then if you're accepted, they will invite you. And at that point, you have ninety days to fund the design of the project. So, for example, on November being, we would come up with roughly three hundred thousand dollars to, for the design of the roof project. And then you'd have twelve months from that invitation date to come up with the money, you know, which would be our April town meeting next year. So if we decide to go through with this project, we would potentially have funds available from the MSBA for the summer of, uh, twenty-six, all right? So, uh, the object here is to simply pass a resolution and allow us to put that application in. The estimate on the roof, if we did a full roof, would be nine point six million dollars. So it would be a significant project that we need the MSBA funding on. If we were to get this fund from it, uh, from the MSBA and the invitation, it makes going to the town that much better if we know what the MSBA funding would have. So it's a good option for us to have to apply now to do this and it's second of getting this roof done. It doesn't bind us to do, complete this application, so that doesn't hurt us if we decide, okay, we're not gonna go through with it. Um, and so, uh, you know, all we're asking is, is to have this resolution approved by the school committee so that we can get the, the application started and, uh, and then, you know, make our decisions on the project later date.
Uh, the timing, I just want to speak to, uh, we normally would not ask you to hear first about it, even though we've talked about the Moss Pond roof being one of the roofs that we know, and then actually to act. Uh, it came up, uh, very quickly to March one, but we didn't have the feasibility study back. So we just received the feasibility study Wednesday before, um, we were on break. And of course, Paul had to go through the feasibility so you see if it was, you know, we would meet the requirements. So, I, you were graciously enough, uh, to put it on the, um, to the agenda tonight, um, to move through. Because of the timing, uh, the select board had to vote last night at their meeting, they didn't have enough time, so they did vote, they did vote for it. So, just so you had that.
Excellent.
It was, uh, announced, probably approved.
You need a motion?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Sorry. Um.
I bet I know what you're gonna say.
I know exactly what I'm gonna say, but we.
Can we move solar on it?
Right. Does, does that nine million include solar? Is that part of this project scope?
The great, I'm, I'm so happy you brought that up. So the good news about this roof, uh, and it, it, you know, when our frustration is then, as we've looked at other buildings, T-Ticket, East Falmouth, North Falmouth, all the roofs are, uh, are not strong enough to add solar panels. Moss Pond, in the original part of that roof, which is around sixty-three thousand square feet, can handle roof, uh, solar panels. The cost of the nine point six million dollars is not including what solar panels, uh, would be, uh, onto that roof. However, uh, in will, we are meeting with the town and Stephanie Madison, I think Heather will be joining us as well on Friday, but uh, there are, we will have two options in the future. One is to purchase the solar panels ourselves, uh, which case maintenance would be on us, uh, after we purchase it. Or another consideration is to bring in a third party like Select Energy, for example. like Select Energy, for example. And they would, we would essentially lease them the space on the roof to do that type of work. And then they would refund us through electricity rebates. So those are the two options we have. So in that case, we, there would be no capital outlay if, if they were to handle the solar panels. But we don't have a price yet if we were to, you know. But it is, it will be part of the project in one form or the other.
And would MSBA funds be able to cover any of that?
They'll fund the solar panels. They will, they will fund some work to get that ready for our solar panels, as far as I'm aware right now.
Thank you. All right. Any other discussion? Okay, great. Wolf call, Mike.
Healan, yes.
Dorfer, yes.
Jerry, yours, yes. Goldstone, yes. The dusting, yes. Welch, yes. Suzie, yes.
Lumpy, yes.
Melissa Keith, yes. That passes, thank you.
And a resolution. Thank you so much.
Sure. Thank you. Okay. Now, moving on to acting on the Falmouth High School New York City field trip. Normally, Jamie Baker is here to sort of present this, but this is a reoccurring annual trip. And I said that I would have shared a few words from her and answer any questions that may or may come up as I've been on a few of them myself. So this is from Mrs. Baker. We've been taking this trip annually since two thousand, since twenty, ooh, two thousand and five. Oh, I am tired, sorry. Minus COVID, of course. Every year, we try to incorporate a major museum, New York galleries, a subway ride, facets of New York life, Brooklyn Bridge, Times Square, Central Park, and food choices. This year, we are hoping to go to the Cloisters and the Whitney Biennial. I'm saying that incorrectly. The Cloisters has a beautiful collection of romance and medieval art and architecture. The Biennial is a famous jury show of the big hip new names in art. We will also be on the High Line, see the Chelsea Galleries, and take the subway from Cloisters to Whitney in the Meatpacking District. The National Art Honor Society has been raising money for this trip, and we're going to continue to do that as the remainder of the class is a responsibility of the student. We always provide two free seats to at least two students who are identified by the Guidance Department as needing financial assistance. And that's all from Mrs. Baker. I can tell you that this trip is so much fun. The kids hop on, we walk across the Brooklyn Bridge. There are lots of photo opportunities. Seeing their faces when they walk through Times Square for the first time is super exciting, as well as seeing the vastness of Central Park and, of course, the street food. The High Line is this, if you're not familiar, is a beautiful raised garden-like area right near the Chelsea Galleries, which a lot of students have taken to doing some sketches there as well. I've not been to the Meatpacking District. However, I'm.
That's where the town goes. That's where the thing starts, and it goes all the way to 57th Street.
Oh, thank you, New York friend. Me, I testified that the last time we were there, so I appreciate, maybe Margaret, you could join us.
Actually, I told, talked to Jamie about going.
Are you kidding? Oh, that'd be so great, okay.
Because actually, I know they're acting, lunch or dinner. Actually, Beth Midler has reopened the restaurant, Cloisters. And the Cloisters have actually brought stuff from Europe for that building, it is absolutely incredible. And my brother-in-law was thrown out of it before.
Margaret, you're not.
Margaret's still on your chaperone.
Again.
So I would like to make the motion, if it's up, give it every last second. Thank you, Kelly. Is there any further discussion? Don't let Margaret say it. Wolf call, Mike.
Healan, yes.
Dorfer, yes.
Jerry, yours, yes.
Goldstone, yes. Dusting, yes. Welch, yes.
Suzie, yes.
Lovely, yes.
Melissa Keith, yes, we're gonna have so much fun. Thank you, everyone. Now, moving on. To act on the Director of Finance and Operations appointment. So I would like to make a motion to approve Dr. Dorr's appointment of Director of Finance and Operations to call her.
Last second.
Is there any discussion?
Absolutely not.
Yay. I would like to just discuss that, thank you for doing such a great job. You are easy to approach, you make it easy to understand. I never thought, you know, I came from the years of Patrick, where, you know, he, very similar, easy to approach, easy to understand. I do not speak numbers. I am not the finance person in our house. I, this is, it's a completely foreign language to me for the most part, but I thank you for always making it approachable, understandable. And, you know, when we're dealing with millions of dollars, it doesn't make it, it doesn't always feel like it's money. So, I mean, it does, but you know what I mean. So, thank you, thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, Wolf call, Mike.
Healan, yes.
Dorfer, yes.
Jerry, yours, yes. Goldstone, yes. The dusting, yes. Welch, yes.
Suzie, yes.
Lumpy, yes.
Melissa Keith, yes. Yay.
I just want to say, if they're coming out of retirement for work for a couple of hours and COVID. I'm just like, yeah, but I, I love you. I love all the people that have been there. And all of you in the School Committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we want to have you.
All right, on to the superintendent update, Dr. Dorr.
Given a quick update on our No Guff Week, which is the week before vacation. We didn't get to have our meeting, we wore our short shirts, but if you, would you, Michael, just opening up the design? So it was one positive contribution, one positive community on the other side. There you go. And this was actually, the design winner was Andrew Lord, a name that you've heard before on several occasions and met. So this was the winner, and so, it was great. Thank you. So this, all the schools participated and had different day, different kind of themes going on in the schools. Teen Kindness Day, Give Guff the Book Day, Schoolwide PJ Day, Falmouth Spirit Year Day, pep rally, dress for success, kindness notes all week to staff and students. So the Community Spirit Award, I'd like to announce, was Annie Kraft. She is just the epitome of kindness. She's such a lovely person. But she does, she works in council payable at the Crane Appliance. Her colleagues brightens the day in waverly optimism and steadfast smiles, willing to help someone in need without reservation, makes people feel special, all the kind of things that just, that's about No Guff, all the kindness. She organized a memorial basketball tournament in memory of her late daughter, Kimberly Kraft, that provides both an outlet for young athletes and scholarships. She attends many of the sporting events and helps fundraise. So, and she was just lovely accepting her. Something else that was kind of exciting, oh, well, before I get to that one. The high school shifted this year in how they presented them the pep awards. So they went to a pep rally, and it was just, it was really exciting. It was one of the best pep rallies, I think, the high school put on. So I give them a lot of credit. And so the entire student body was there when the student awards were. So it really just made it, and it was just, they did all kind of things. It was what the students have been asking. It's been one of the things in the, the student advisory was that we have to have better pep rallies. They just want a pep rally. And so I got, the teachers jumped in and really put on, they had a contest between the students on their cheer that they came up with. The freshmen took it away, by the way, so now they've got four years to keep that up. But it was, it was really exciting. And so it was nice to see that type of, it's exciting at the high school. Lawrence has been doing that, the pep rally, for several years, and has been doing and announcing the student awards. So the staff at Lawrence selects the staff member that deserves the award for each year. And this year, they selected George Spivey. And I have to tell you, you would have thought that he was a rock star. He is a rock star, because the students cheered up. Thursday, we're, you know, calling out his name and just, you know, and just clapping. They stood, they cheered, and it was just an overwhelming experience. But, so it was really exciting at Lawrence that we had two very lovely people that got those awards. Anyway, so that's my update on No Guff. My update on composting. We are, you know, we started with Mon Hall. Morse Pond started in January. Lawrence will be up and running in March. We're still planning the high school for April. All of the dishwashers are in the other three elementary schools now. They're all installed, and they will be up and running before. So we actually are meeting the goal before the end of the year. We thought it was gonna take two years. We weren't sure we were gonna get all seven schools. They will be up and running, so it's very exciting. The students are loving it, it's going very well. But in partnership with the Falmouth Solid Waste Commission and EPW, the Advent Building is going to be the second site for the Falmouth community of composting. So they are going, the EPW is gonna support financially and oversee the whole project, but the station will be here on our property for the, the entire community that can bring their food waste. And then contracting again with Black Earth that they will be doing a pickup once, twice a week.
That's so great.
And so, you know, I'm really excited that we're the second site, right? We have one at the transfer station. This is more centrally located. But the, the, our members of, you know, Alan and Mary are so great on the solid, basically, we're like, we're really leading the town here. And so it's gonna be called Clipper Composting for the town, so our community, it's all gonna be about. I just am very proud that we're the stewards in moving in this direction. And that we're actually, so I'm very excited about that. And I, oh, an update, we had our second Mastery Grading Advisory Committee last night, and Sonya, you wanna give us an update on that? Great meeting, great, great session.
Sure. And I'm able to facilitate the advisory with Dr. Erin Hasteid, who's our elementary literacy manager. We did have a few parents who were unable to join last night, and I either set up a call, a Zoom meeting, or we're talking about, I'm gonna bring materials to their child's school, and then they're either gonna break them up or give them. Because we're trying to keep ourselves together in the loop. And we also talked about the principals having sent messages home in their weekly communications and trying to keep the invitation open if there are other people that can jump to the principals. We went through what our charges as an advisory again last night and started to make plans. So next time we gather, we're gonna be workshopbing the FAQ document, the web content, so we can get a webpage up and running. And we're gonna do a one-page quick fact sheet, and we're also beginning to prep the slides for the open informational sessions, which will run four times, one at each elementary school. So if anyone's picky to the site or the date that works best for them, through May and then to June. And then also talked a little bit about, our teachers are returning to professional development. So it was scheduled in the catalog that went out last June that they are returning in earnest to specific conversations with grading now that they've kind of moved into the implementation of math and they're bringing those together. And so we've been planning on that, and we're gonna talk a little bit about that. And the conversation was definitely impactful, I think, for us as well. We made some adjustments to the PD plan based on last night's conversation.
Sure.
What else?
I know there's been some discussions, some questions out there, so if you can help out. How many teachers are involved in this planning team?
Yeah, because it was an advisory intended for family members, we asked for one teacher from each school to be part of the conversation. But we're doing a lot of the work with our teachers through the PD, so everybody can be there, and it's not kind of some who may be in, some who aren't. But recognizing the advisory was intended for families, we just asked for one from each school to kind of help answer questions or give examples.
And what is going through with the grade level leaders, which?
Oh, yes.
Yes, so being, talking a little bit about the number of teachers and their responsibility of sharing.
Sure. Grade level leaders, there's one grade level leader from each of our four elementary schools for each grade, so it's a team of twenty. They run their grade level department meetings. So they bring information back to their grade levels. So it's kind of where our feedback loop really exists. And then they also help to inform the PD plan for the half-day. So the workshop, like, we'll have next Tuesday and then again in May. So we have a few different ways in which we're gathering feedback and ideas to influence what we are.
Okay. So there's been, I guess what you're saying is there's been at least, like, twenty teachers at each school that have had a chance to kind of give feedback and guidance process, or?
They're helping to design what the sessions are at PD. And when we get to the PD level, that's everybody. So it's all of the teachers and then all of the administrators.
Just to clarify, designing the PD is designing the whole process and what it looks like. So yes, their input is in with the grading, right? So when she speaks to PD, you have to develop what this, then you're gonna share it with the teachers, they'll learn, but there's that, still that feedback loop around that process.
So I guess, and I'm just trying to make sure I leave as many questions that could come in to us, so. So how many, like, before the decision was made to move to the mastery role, or how many teachers were involved in that process, giving feedback and steering whether or not to even do this in the first place?
So I think there's another piece of that in order to answer a question, which is that there are different words that get used to mean the same thing. The current recording system we have for K to four is a standards-based system, so it is very much oriented around mastery with the four points, and then teachers having selected standards. So we've had a model that's very similar for over ten years. And so in this process, what we're really looking to do is update the existing model more than make a significant change. And that's been one of the things that we've been talking about with the advisory. So in using the existing model and looking to update it and not necessarily making really substantial changes like taking away letter grades to replace it with numbers, it wasn't sort of a, hey, you know, we're gonna be doing this change. Have you feel about it? It's been more about, we've been growing into this over time, and so now we're just trying to have a workar reflect updated standards that have been published and then the language that she used to talk about learning at the state level. Does that make sense?
Mike has a question.
Yes, hi. Sonya, just, it is an easy one, hopefully. There is four elementary schools, four parents per school. That was what I understood, so sixteen total.
That was originally what we're anticipating, just to kind of think about an advisory size, right, to make decisions and work through that. But we had told the principals that if they had more than four, then we would look to increase the number. No one had more than four people reach out.
All right, then the second part to my question, you've had two meetings, what is the number of parents per meeting?
The first meeting, all but one of the parents who had signed up attended. I have to go back and look at the exact number. Last night, three attended, and as I shared earlier, people who couldn't for one reason or another had reached out. And so we've made plans to meet or talk individually just so they feel caught up and ready for the next meeting.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Terry.
In amongst the discussion, I don't know when, was that East Falmouth had no parents. Did you get some from East Falmouth?
We have not.
We have not yet. And we've also, in between the first meeting and the second meeting, in a couple of places, had people sign up and then notice it didn't work in their schedule. Uh, and then say, no, sorry, I can't join, but, you know, thank you for the opportunity. And we were trying to garner more support along the way.
Yeah, that's a bummer that you have an entire school with no parent representation. Can the principal, can we put out an all-call to parents?
They, they've put it in their weekly communications a few weeks over. Um, and I know that they've been, if the people were there for a meeting, I think that they maybe mentioned it in the PTO.
The PTO, yes.
Um, so I know they are trying to, to do that. And I think the other part too is, this isn't, right, they're helping to shape what's gonna come to the information session. And then that's another way that we want to be able to bring in the more data. And it's also not a change that we're looking, uh, to implement at this fall. So as we continue through our PD and we're working through that, we're hoping to continue to get more information, more feedback.
So it isn't this, do you have a, a timeframe on when it'll be?
You, that's part of the conversation for, um, PD with the teachers next week. But, um, looking at taking different pieces of some of the adjustments and having them try them out, um, in terms of like, do we wanna, um, use this language or this language? When we're talking about students meeting the standard, right? So we wanna test some of that before we have a whole new, uh, reporting system.
So, but still, do you have a year? Would it be 2025, or?
Anticipating, uh, that it could be
Yeah, just 24.
Fall of '25, but we're working, you know, working through that.
Yeah, so still we have time to get some more input. So, yeah, that's making me, I'm not, I'm too bad. It's, it's a shame because we need to get some more of our input. Okay.
Heather?
Yeah, similar to that, um, three parents out of what was envisioned as a 16-person advisory. Obviously, you said, felt like it was really substantive conversation. And when you've got a small group, you can get into those kind of conversations. But I'm curious whether you feel like they were representative, um, sentiments, or, or like whether you, you need, you know, more input on, on the, the topics based on the fact that you only have three parents there last night.
Yeah, and I think achieving what we're gonna be doing at the, the bigger informational sessions with all families and trying to bring people in, I think they're helping to get that initial wave out. And then that's just another way to buckle in. You know, we said it again last night, you know, we're encouraging more, more people to participate. So maybe, you know, if they helped to, to spread that word and you said, you know, make sure people come back to the principals. And then I'm also following up a meeting with the principals, uh, their, their monthly meeting, just to talk through that a little bit more too. Um, and then anybody that's, you know, reached out with like a separate question or whatever. If it's, you know, it's been one or two questions, we've gone through that. It would sort of become like a little bit of a back and forth. I, I'm trying to invite people either in for a meeting or a phone call, um, just so that we can kind of work through the questions as they come up and, and exchange information. Um, but just trying to find, help people from what time they have to, to lean in and respond.
Great.
And then the last, uh, I just, you have the retirements. As I, you know, always tell you, we tell the retirees that, uh, we won't let them publish until February 16th. So this is the meeting to share with you. Um, we have a small, smaller number this year of retirements. Um, we have 11. Um, I can share with you, uh, in December, um, that Johnny Noe, uh, had retired as of December. So I did share that one earlier because that was, uh, there's, um, Tim Allen, another really incredible custodian, um, at the high school, uh, is retiring, um, after 36 years in the next few days. Um, so, um, it's kind of, so we wish him well. Um, he will be a loss for the, for the, the school. Um, he was, he's great. And then everyone else is the end of June, um, retirement dates that, that you see here.
That's a loss.
That's a loss in that list.
Wow, that's
I like this concept. Hasn't been on the spring tours. The custodians and the acknowledgement buildings and the way they care for those buildings and the way they are just aware of everything and do beyond what we, because some of the buildings really have leaks here and they're running around. I mean, we are very fortunate to have the quality of custodians that we really have in all of our buildings. And they should be really appreciated. I, I was terribly impressed. And losing someone who's good, hopefully we find somewhere as good who can take this place.
Agreed. Great. Routine business. You have the minutes of January 2020, January 23rd, 2024 in front of you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Terry? I'm giving it to Margaret. I get, I got calories. Any discussion, comments, edits?
Your first.
Seeing none. Of course they are. Seeing none, welcome.
Haley, yes?
Dorfert, same.
Terry Bedeers, yes.
Goldstone, yes. Beston, yes. Wells, yes.
Suzie, yes.
London, yes.
Melissa Keith, yes. The past two, yes. We, without, um, those exceptions. Thank you all. Committee member reports. Terry, of course.
Okay, that's, um, so I'm gonna give the report from the K-Cod Collaborative first. I thought I mentioned two special projects. One of them, I have this flyer, and I imagine, um, HR has this from Bridgewater, right? Um, this is one of the things that the collaborative's goal is, is to, um, look at the whole cake and see what do we need. We scream need for special education teachers. And anyway, um, and some of them, some teachers may be working on what's called an emergency license. So I don't know if they have any of those of help. Anyway, um, one thing the collaborative does is they are in contact with Bridgewater. And if you have an emergency license and you're working to get the official license, they're gonna help you at no cost. So anyway, that's one thing the collaborative's involved in, along with their strategic planning. The other special project is one thing I have loved, and I'm gonna keep talking about. I hope somebody will go with me to see what's called the ASLP program. It's a science program for junior high kids. They go and they literally spend, they stay in the dorms there. They build boats, they play music, they, it's so cool. And they, um, the campus is beautiful. So I, I go when, when they give the presentation and I hope somebody else will go. I mean, Margaret, who likes to go on tours and stuff, right? Maybe, um, certainly.
Careful. You get kicked out.
Too many. All the way back. Forgive myself that. Anyway, um, I'll, I'll bring back more information. Falmouth has, historically has the most slots. Um, because other districts that don't fill them up, Falmouth, um, has been taken. Anyway, so I'll be talking more about that. The other thing, and I wanna have a lot of energy for Vipps. This is I Love Vipps Week. Okay, so, um, Vipps now has a new website. Um, so the logos that you're used to are replaced by four interlocking circles that stand for the four, um, different things that they do, which I won't go into now because it's late. But this is I Love Vipps Week. And I just wanna stress that Vipps only runs on donations. So I'm hoping everybody who listens, all the teachers, all you school committee people, will donate something. I mean, there's, it's easy. You look at this beautiful new website they have made, and there's a button that says donate. And five dollars, I mean, if a lot of people give five dollars, that's great. So that's one thing. Think about, um, consider donating. Go to, it's falmuthvips.org is the, is the website. Um, and the other thing I wanna, um, tell you is if you scroll down, just us school committees, if you scroll down to the bottom, there's a place now you can log your hours, right, right from the website. Margaret had asked me to remind people, but I knew this new website was coming up, so. Anyway, two things. Donate at the top. Five bucks helps. Go to the bottom and log your hours, okay? And this is I Love Vipps Week. We should all love Vipps.
I want to my hours right now.
Good, okay. We are so lucky to have Vipps in our district. We are just really lucky. But being on the board directors is a horrible job. Nobody should take it, because I want it forever. I'm only kidding. It's a wonderful job. You know that. But anyway, I just wanted to get it. Okay.
Next, uh, committee member report. Anyone?
Yes, we had, you're on call. We had a DEI meeting, right? Yeah, I'm trying to rephrase those. My hand, my hand right is terrible. I think one of the important issues was we run move from optics to, to, uh, and optics performative to really move to operationalize. And the need to build groups of people, train students, that no place to help is a one-point introduction. But we're concerned about equity, making sure you have equity teams at all of the places. Uh, training students, um, to advocate for students. And to recognize that words hurt and that symbols hurt. Uh, so there's needing for training teachers and students. And did you have more to say, Heather?
No, I think just, um, as usual, great conversation and talking about what it means to, um, go from, not that we were necessarily just talking the talk, but making sure we're not just saying that we do this, that we're not just doing the things that are flashy, but really thinking about what does equity and access mean for every student every day on a really operational level, whether that's, you know, uh, we've got universal lunch now, so that's great. Right, but, but the things that might not be as, um, as sexy or headline, but are really important from an equity perspective. So great conversation, as usual.
Excellent. Any other committee member report?
As EFEF liaison, I'll just, if everybody has not already, uh, signed up for, um, the EFEF Gala. It's an awesome, fun night coming up, uh, you know, jam-packed weekend. Um, on Saturday night, the 16th, after the STEAM Fair that moment, that morning.
STEAM Fair.
We'll be at STEAM Fair, we'll be at EFEF. That's one of my favorite Saturdays of the year, so, um, hope to see everybody there.
And there's the trivia night. Table for six. I'm taking six people. It's our table, sir.
Your brother-in-law wanted that.
My brother-in-law, who, who shows up when trouble. Three years ago.
This isn't really a committee member, uh, report, but I just want to, um, read aloud an email from, uh, Corinne Adams, a ceramics teacher, um, ceramics art teacher at Falmouth High School. Just to shout out to some, uh, kiddo, our students in our, at the high school. Both Merritt Wilcox and Ameri, and Amanda Ito's ceramic artwork has been selected by juror for the National K-12 Ceramic Exhibition during the National Education of Ceramic Art Convention in Richmond, Virginia. The decisions of the juror were based on an examination of 1,169 entries for this year's exhibition. The work will now be included amongst the best from our country. Their artwork will be shipped to Richmond and will be on display during the convention and seen by ceramic artists, students, and educators from all over the world. Just, and then one more amazing highlight for our teachers, for our district, and for, of course, our students. So that email came into the school committee and I just wanted everyone to hear that. Congratulations, Merritt and Amanda.
Anyone else? Any, uh, future requests for information? No? Is that motion for jury? Second?
Haley, yes? Henry's halfway up. We're, let's go.
Great, thanks everyone. Good night.